Welcome to the Ojai City Council, Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency Regular Meeting of August 26. Councilmember Laura, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Oh, I guess I should have done the roll call.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I guess we better back up to the roll call. Councilmember Blatts?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Here.
Mayor Strobel?
Present.
And we have some presentations tonight. The first presentation is Empower Program.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Clark, for the record, my name is Sue Hughes. I work for the County of Ventura in the County CEO's office, and I'm here tonight to share with you a new program we have running countywide. The program is called Empower. It's an energy efficiency program. It started in 2011 in Santa Barbara County. They kicked off the program when they got Department of Energy and ARA funding. And it was so successful in Santa Barbara County that the powers that be said, "We'll give you more money if you expand." So they contacted the County of Ventura and the County of San Luis Obispo and said, "We'd like to expand and we'll get more money. Are you interested?" And we said, "Absolutely, we're interested." So in Ventura County, the program was kicked off last month, and for those of you who don't know, seventy-eight percent of the homes in Ventura County are more than twenty-five years old. So that leads us to believe that they're probably not nearly as energy efficient as a home that's built today. And I'm sort of living proof of that because I thought, "Well, what a better way to try and test out the program than have it done at my house." So the program offers what we call an energy consultant. An energy consultant will come out to a person's residence, and they'll do a review of what the house has, what the house doesn't have. So I thought, "Well, I'm gonna have this guy come to my house. My house is only fourteen years old. He's not gonna find a thing." And then he got up in the attic, and I could hear him going, "Hmm, interesting." And so when he came down, I'm like, "Hey, I'm coastal. I live in Oxnard. And I, you know, I have an electric bill that's like thirty dollars a month. I don't need anything, right?" And he said, "Well, the insulation they put in your house fourteen years ago is not the insulation they use today. And you know those canned lights you have in your kitchen and your family room? Well, none of them are sealed, so you're just letting all this energy escape." And here, I thought I was so wise that I had this... I have double-pane windows, so that I had going for me. But this program offers homeowners someone to come into their house and give them consultation on whether they need insulation, whether they need new windows, whether they need their lights retrofitted. And you probably are asking, "Well, how is this paid for?" Unlike some of the programs, I know that, I believe it was last week or the week before, the city signed on with the HERO-PACE program. Those programs, the loan is attached to the home as a property assessment on your tax bill. This is a personal loan that you take out. Currently, we have two lenders, Coast Hills Credit Union out of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo, and for Ventura, it's the Ventura County Credit Union. The loans are at 5.9%, and they can... The term is fifteen years. You can borrow anywhere from a thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars to do improvements on your home. FICO score only needs to be 590. Again, it is a personal loan that you take out. And the energy consultant that comes out will sort of give you a notion of what you should have done first. So maybe someone has just purchased a home in Ojai, and they think, "Okay, I just bought a forty-year-old home, and it's got all these old things in it, and I don't really have the money to do everything all at once." So he'll help walk them through what needs to be done first, second, third. There is one error that's in this brochure that was handed out. It says up to $4,500 in rebates and incentives. We now are offering up to $6,500 in rebates and incentives based on whatever it is you have done at your home. So again, it's a personal loan. The credit union is who... The Ventura County Credit Union is who we've partnered with. It's open to all residents of Ventura County, the program is. And we think it's pretty simple, and we think it's a pretty good idea. So what we've done is... And I thank you for inviting us to participate and to give you the information today. What we're really trying to do is get the word out to all the residents of Ventura County. We're doing workshops. Likely, we'll be doing one in the city of Ojai sometime in the first quarter of 2015. We're working on a lot of calendars and a lot of cities and a lot of workshops. So if anyone has a notion of maybe where in the city we can do a workshop and invite the residents, we will always take that input from you. I will call you. We'll find a place. So with... And the workshops take an hour, hour and a half. We like to do them right at dinnertime, and we feed the people who come to the workshops. So grab a sandwich, grab something, and we'll have something to eat. In fact, one of the women who works on the program is in Camarillo tonight doing their first workshop in the city of Camarillo. So we're all over. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the program or anything we're doing.
I'd like to ask, you have brochures. Do we have some that we can put out in the...
Okay. And as soon as we get new ones with the updated information about the increase in the rebates, we'll bring some more up to you. And then anybody who's interested, if they call us at the Ventura number that's listed on the back of the brochure, we answer that out of the County CEO's office is where we operate the program. And this funding, if you're wondering where the funding comes from, all of us pay for this program because it's all ratepayer money that comes out of the utilities that's put in a special fund, and that's how we're operating the program. So all of us are paying for this. Everyone who pays for utilities is helping to pay for the program. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
And one more question. You may have answered it. If someone... If a resident is interested in having a consultant come to their home to do an evaluation, at what point is there any financial obligation? Can that consultant... Will that consultant come to the home before there's an application filed, or...
Thank you. And I... The consultant will come, tell them what is recommended, what the house needs. There's no pressure. If the homeowner says, "Well, I'm looking for a list of who does this, what kind of contractors." The consultant will have a list of contractors that the homeowner is... If they're interested in contacting the contractors. So there's no pressure at all to do this. It takes approximately a day to find out if you're qualified with the credit union, to know that if you're eligible for the loan. I should mention a couple other things. One, there is no prepayment penalty, so if you pay the loan off before that fifteen years, you're not charged a penalty for it, where some other programs, there's a prepayment penalty. Also, where we are making sure that, as part of the program, all of the contractors who come to your house, they have to be certified to do this work. So we're training contractors as well as the help that we're giving homeowners for full energy efficiency in their homes. And we're doing the training for the contractors at quite a discounted rate. The training that normally costs about thirty-five hundred dollars for a contractor is only costing five hundred dollars for them. To do the training, they're certified, then they're put on a list in order to be able to do this kind of work in your home.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Our next presentation is recognizing businesses that are demonstrating good lighting practices. And it's my pleasure to recognize five commercial establishments who have achieved the goals of the lighting ordinance adopted by the city council last year. These five commercial establishments all have lighting which is low intensity, downward-directed, and shielded. They achieve our goals of creating a safe, energy-efficient, and pleasing atmosphere in Ojai while eliminating the unnecessary glare through thoughtful and creative lighting design. I'll read the names of the recipients and ask them to come forward as a group to receive their certificates and to pose for a photograph. The Hummingbird Inn and Capri Hotel, owners Tom Duty and Pamela Robbins. The Oaks at Ojai, Kathy Cluff. Nutmeg's Ojai House, owner Meg Goodwin. Azu, owner Elizabeth Havner, and manager Laurel Moore. Now here, so we have the two. And I'm going to... The award for the Oaks recognizes low-intensity and frosted fixtures which comply with the new standards while still being effective and efficient. And Nutmeg's Ojai House, that's difficult for me to say, knowing your name is Meg. The certificate honors her success in protecting the dark sky in an inspiring and artful way. So we have the two of you. Do you have it? Okay. The Oaks? Kathy? Meg? I love that. And would either of you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to. Thank you very much. Very much appreciated. I just wanted to recognize the late David Burry because without his vision, he always told us that working at the... On the project at the Oaks was archaeological architecture. And he knew that the property had good bones and wanted to bring it back to life. And so again, his vision, which is both inside and outside of the Oaks, as well as our great contractors, Tim Droni and Mariah Droni, they're really the ones who deserve this award. I mean, I'm the one that says, "Looks great, guys. Let's do it." But really, their vision, and again, we are just... We're so fortunate to have a business with the backdrop of Ojai. That's really what makes it for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that you guys are recognizing that we need to protect our dark for our birds. Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
And I'm glad to see that we're doing these recognition plaques also because it gives something visual, something physical, when you're accomplishing what the dark sky... The intent of the dark sky ordinance. So I think it's a positive thing. So hopefully, the listening audience will be inspired, and tomorrow morning, we'll have all our lights shielded. We have one more presentation. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
I will be reading the proclamation, and it says, "Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than fifteen thousand of our country's young people each year and every year. Whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded over twenty years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, and Kids Cancer Connection are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital Los Angeles, the City of Hope, Mattel Children's Hospital at UCLA, L.A. County, USC Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for their children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition award ceremonies and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, I, Carlin Strobel, mayor of the city of Ojai, and on behalf of the Ojai City Council, do hereby proclaim this month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month."
Thank you. And we don't have anyone here to receive the proclamation, so we'll give it to our city clerk.
Just as a... As a side, our local Ventura County Medical Center has a pediatric oncology unit, and we offer chemo to our local children. So let's say they go down to UCLA or Children's Hospital of L.A. and get started on treatment. They then do not have to go to Children's Hospital all the way in L.A. to continue their treatment. They can have it right here in Ventura, and we're very lucky to have that facility.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public communication. And I have quite a few speakers, but before we start, I just wanted to mention that this afternoon, Mayor Protim Smith spoke at the Ojai Valley Hospital ceremony for the improvements they have accomplished. And I just wanted to say thank you and to... If you haven't seen the improvements at the hospital or you haven't been involved, get involved. It's really important to our community. Okay, public comments. This is for items not on the agenda. Pete LaFalle?
That's the... Oh, there he is.
Thank you, Mayor Strobel. Pete LaFalle, 999 East Ojai Avenue. The last council meeting, a corporate vendor of cellphone towers spoke at length about installing... Potentially installing towers here in the valley. He did represent a corporation, corporate entity, and I'd just like to remind the council that corporations are not people. However, the constituents of Ojai Valley, they're very much people here. I would request that you use your political instincts wisely on this cellphone tower ongoing discussion. And in closing, I'd just like to thank Paul Blatts and the other membership for your vigilance and your leadership on this very important issue for the quality of life in the Ojai Valley.
Thank you, Pete. Fred Fisher?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I wanted to... My wife and I live at 607 North Signal Street, and we are delighted that last week, the Planning Commission unanimously approved the design for our new house, which we're planning to build on the property. I wanted to speak very briefly about the challenge of innovation in sustainability and housing, two aspirations that the city is pursuing. My wife and I, in the course of owning the property, my wife and I acquired a world-class, sustainable, net-zero, prefab, affordable, flexible dwelling prototype. It's sitting on the property now. After months of diligent study of the code, the staff came to the determination that it was not possible to put this nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot dwelling on our three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-square-foot property. It's three-hundred-and-twenty square feet over the six-hundred-and-forty-square-foot limit. Our property is more than fifty times the size of a typical village lot. I only offer that if you could consider, while protecting Ojai, the character of Ojai, you consider that certain properties have unique character, and certain projects have potential demonstration value to the community, and that maybe perhaps the staff and the commission could be given tools to allow those things to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William Wirek?
Mayor and members of council, yesterday at approximately 2:00 PM, the Public Utilities Commission of the State of California issued a notice of pre-hearing conference on the Golden State rate case. Administrative Judge Long was appointed. The pre-hearing is scheduled for September 2 of 2014. So they issued this notice yesterday afternoon, September 2. It's coming up pretty fast. I would hope that the council be informed, and I think the public should be informed, given the resolution designated the city of Ojai as an intervenor, who and the staff will be designated to, I hope, attend this pre-hearing conference where various parties and procedural matters are defined. I also think it's important to note that accompanying the service... Was a service list on this notice of pre-hearing conference, and the city of Ojai is yet to be listed on the service list. For example, the city of Claremont is, and I would hope that the council, you know, be sure that we appropriately are on the service list for this matter. And last and all, but not least, intervenor status includes reimbursement for intervenor activities, but it's reimbursement, which means money from the city needs to be spent first before reimbursement occurs. And I would hope council clarify with staff what the source of funds would be or how the budgeting would be done, and if there needs to be some action by the council that that be done in an appropriate fashion so that we can fulfill the promise of the resolution for effective intervenor status in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
Yes, more quickly, if you don't mind, I'd like to have a brief comment on this. I think that it's... That Mr. Wirek has brought us some very important points, and I would like our city manager to make sure that those issues are taken care of.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve Colisi?
Thank you, Mayor Strobel, council members. I want to second Mr. Wirek's request that someone from the city attend this pre-conference hearing. It's next Tuesday, so it's not far off. It's important. I will come back with another green card to talk about the warrants, but the city pays a pretty hefty water bill every year, every month for that matter, and I think someone from the city ought to be there, making sure that everyone knows that the city is concerned. Second, I wanted to thank the council and the Parks and Recs... Parks and Rec Commission for that joint meeting that you had at Sarzadi Park last week. I guess it was last week, wasn't it? Yeah. I felt like both groups worked hard to find some common ground where we might do something good for the city. And I hope that the comments that I made during that meeting helped a bit in that direction to make sure that we understand that there are no... There are no people here in the city that are trying to do anyone else in the eye. We're all trying to live together, live peaceably, and live safely. And I hope that what comes out of that meeting will accomplish all that for the skate park and alternative venues for the kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Hanford?
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff. Robert Hanford, general manager for the Coastal District for Golden State Water Company. Just wanted to address the council briefly on three items tonight. Fire protection, the 2014 General Rate Case, GRC, and emergency drought regulations. We spoke about the fire hydrant maintenance at the last council meeting. Of the twenty-eight fire hydrants, all repairs have been completed except for four. Two, the fire department is reconfirming the address for those fire hydrants. One, the homeowner is trimming the landscaping around the fire hydrant. And the last one, we're going to try to rotate the fire hydrant to avoid the homeowner from having to relocate his mailbox. We also have a meeting scheduled Thursday afternoon with the local engine company to discuss all the remedial repairs. On the 2014 GRC, customers will start receiving written notices of the rate case. We call them the forty-five-day notice, and it tells them how to participate in the rate case process. If adopted, rate adjustments will be effective in January 2016 and for... Overall, for the years 2016, 2017, and 2018. The last item is the historic drought conditions in California. State Water Resources Control Board has adopted emergency restrictions and outdoor watering use, and we have adopted those same restrictions. The four restrictions are also posted on our website. The state regulations allow for a public agency to levy fines for water waste. Our concern is, we want to educate our customers first. And to that end, we have... I just noticed tonight, we've updated our website where our customer can get... Log on to the website and report to us water wasting, water running off on sidewalks, outdoor use that's being wasteful with water. We will follow up with all these. We also have very stringent reporting requirements to the state of California every month on monitoring these drought restrictions. And that's all I have available for any questions.
I have one, and I'm going to compare you with another utility, so...
Okay.
If I were to smell gas in my home, I could pick up the phone and call the gas company, and they would send someone out.
Right.
If someone thinks that there's a higher water consumption than they think is reasonable for them, is there someone they can call at Golden State to come out and check for them?
Yes, we have a 24/7... I'd have to... Excuse... I don't have it memorized. It's on my phone.
But we do have...
Right.
We have someone.
We have a 24/7 call center, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that takes those kind of concerns. And we dispatch those during regular working hours, make an appointment with the homeowner, come out. One thing we do offer, and maybe something we do a much better job of sharing with all of our communities, is with this concern for water conservation, we will come out and schedule a third-party vendor to do an independent water audit, similar to what you heard about energy audits this evening. They'll go through, do a thorough review of the inside and outside water use, prepare a written report, and provide that to the homeowner at no charge. So that's... It's amazing because a lot of people hire someone to do their landscaping, some people don't. Irrigation controllers can be difficult to program. You can have two cycles going on, not even know it. You can have sprinklers coming on in the middle of the night, not even be aware of it. So this third-party water audit we do is available just by calling us, and we will schedule it with the homeowner.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Quick question. How much water are you taking from Lake Casitas now as opposed to wells?
I don't have... I can get back to you, and Mr. Clark, I don't...
Yes, I'd like to know that.
Yeah, happy to.
Thank you.
And that's part of our monthly reporting requirements to the state as well.
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Daddy?
Good evening. It's been a long time. I hope it's a long time next time. It came to my attention, as I was monitoring the Public Utility Commission, that we had a deadline of August 1st for Golden State to file their general rate case. I called Danello Sanchez, the superintendent, and he told me that he had requested that Golden State delay their filing by fifteen days. So when they delayed the filing, they delayed everybody's ability to apply, to be listed on the publication, which is the city that applied the 14th of August. It wasn't accepting the applications with no default. Mr. Wirek spent hour after hour after hour overriding and forcing the issue. You can't apply until they assign a commissioner and they assign an advocate law judge, and none of those were in place. So I know that the city was aware. I sent an email, and they did their best, and we made it just under the wires. I made it as an individual, and I made it as Ojai Flow. Mr. Wirek also made it. So the fact that the city wasn't notified, it was a technicality that just was overcome. There's still a technicality. Well, we have Douglas Long, who is gonna be our law judge. He's excellent, by the way. When they denied us a hearing three years ago, they also removed him from the case as kind of a penalty to us for being a little forceful. So we didn't get him, but we did get him the prior rate case before. He'll be on it again. Let's make a lot of water wasters for a second. I think on the website, every time there's a water waster, which is an eight-inch pipe broken, I think that should be interactive on our website. And I think it should be interactive on their website. And I want to know... interactive on their website, and I want to know how many gallons, millions of gallons of water they put out in the street every year. And when they're testing, if they're going to test and they're going to let water go out there, why can't they let the public know ahead of time and let the people show up with their little tanks and buckets and all these other things, because water's just going to go straight into the street, and some of these people could use that at whatever level. We could use that and get some tanks there and water some of our distressed oak trees and some of the other things in there. We've done a lot, the council has done a lot, the council has spent, I think, I want to say $40,000, which may not be correct, unstop the trucks. I think we have a new contract with a new attorney to help with some issues, possibly $30,000. I think we dedicated around $25,000 to the cell tower. I think we've, we've helped the Green Coalition with another $10,000. And I'd like to know when we can get around to helping Flow so we can go to San Francisco and be the intervenors that we haven't been up there. I would request that you put money aside in a budget. We're being overcharged $10,000 a day, and as of yesterday, the appeal from Golden State to the lawsuit that we won against them should have been filed and is now in the appeal process. So I'd ask that you consider giving us a budget. We've spent a lot of money in a lot of areas, and I think Ojai Flow needs to have some financial support. Their sole purpose is to protect the community against being overcharged. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of the public comments. Bill Miley?
Good evening, my name is Bill Miley, I live on North Signal Street. It's appropriate that the gentleman from the water company talked about water supplies because my comment is about a new product that I have learned about, and I'd like to share with people here and on TV land. It's a product that Miracle Grow has recently produced. I learned about it at Flora Gardens, and it's called Water Storing Crystals. Comes in a small bag, tells you how to mix it with soil. If you're repotting plants, that's good. If you are, if you have plants in the ground, you can put it in the ground, and I've worked that away, I'll tell you about that. It's designed to, each crystal is designed to store 10 times its weight in water, which means that it doesn't evaporate out of the ground, and it's available for plants. I've used it for about two months in a lot of pots, and it appears that I've cut my watering cycle down by 50%, and the plants look better than ever because they don't droop and then I water it like I used to. We just got our two-month water bill, and I'm not sure whether the meter was red or guessed at, but I think it was red, and this year we've used about 40% of the water that we used last year for two months. I'll know in the future whether it still holds up. Does anybody here, do anybody, do you know about this crystal? Have you heard about it? Well, I watered the trees about a month ago with another fellow Ojai Tree Association member, Bob, I don't remember his last name, but he's a chemist, and he worked for Procter and Gamble. He says, "Oh, I know about those chemicals, they put them in diapers. It holds the urine." So if you don't want to buy the product, you can just get some old diapers and put them in the ground, right? And that'll help out. So if you're, if people are interested in buying this and you want to put it into the ground with plants that are already there, the way to do it, and I've worked it out, is you buy some play of school sand, some play sand, you mix the crystals in the sand, you poke a hole in the ground around your tree or your plant, you pour the sand in to fill the hole, you take the tool like a tire iron, and you move it around, so you push those crystals into the ground around the plant, and then you water it, and over a period of a couple of months, the roots will start to grow into that area, and they won't dry out nearly as fast. You can get the product at Flora Gardens, that's the only place I've seen it, and you can also buy it on the web. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? I don't see anyone. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our consent calendar, and we have, Mr. Quilisi would like to make a comment on the warrants, which is item B. Mr. Wirek has comments on salary schedule for management employees, which is item E. So I'd like those to pull from the consent calendar. Anyone?
Madam Mayor, if, if I could pull item G?
Okay, we'll pull item G also. So that leaves item A, C, D, F. That's it.
I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Item 1B, which is the warrants for July 26th through August 12th. Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I've, I've spent a good part of the last 40 years in industry, aerospace and communications, putting together financial plans for companies as well as judging them and, and rating them as, as my company put them together, along with doing the engineering and such. And I'm, I'm confused by what I see here, and I'm just asking for some advice on how to understand the warrants section here. There is a check register, list by check number, and there is a disbursements list by check number. There are 97 checks written, and 12 of them are not on the disbursements list, so I assume those are checks that haven't cleared yet. Of the remaining 85, 31 of them have one value listed for that check number in the registry, in the check register, and a different value, always less, in the disbursements listing for the same check number. I don't understand, I'm hoping someone here can, can help me understand how that happened. It's almost 40% of, of the checks have different numbers in the check register and the disbursements list. Thank you.
Okay. Is Susie Mears, our finance director back there? Mr. Quilisi? This is Susie Mears, our finance director. If you would give her a call, she's very good about going over all of these figures. So just give her a call and she can go over the entire warrant registers with you. Any other comments?
No.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question that is in the disbursements. Check number 59832, it's for Custom Signals, Five Pro Laser Raptor P D radar equipment for $7,038.98. And I was wondering why the City of Ojai purchased, I'm assuming this is for the Sheriff's Department? Maybe somebody could explain, maybe Susie or you, Mr. Clark?
I don't know off the top of my head, we can get back to you on that.
Maybe, maybe, does, do you know?
Yes.
Is that for you guys?
Yes, it's a purchase that I made through Ms. Mears, and we used our COPS funding, the grant that we have, to purchase the equipment for the city, beat cars for traffic enforcement.
Okay, so that came from the COPS funding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions regarding the warrants? We'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve item 1B.
Second.
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Item E, updating and amending the salary schedule for management employees. Mr. Wirek?
William Wirek, 607 North Blanch, mayor members of council. My question is this. Very often, when a department head resigns and they're looking at a replacement, it's, it's not uncommon anyway for the entire structure of that department to be reviewed. Is it being handled in the, in the, in the, in the best structural fashion with looking forward in terms of legacy costs? Are there possible outsourcing components of that that would be, would serve the taxpayer better? Basically, a structural review of the position. This seems to be pretty much a request for not just a salary range, but imputed with that, simply a replacement of the position as currently constituted. And I was just wondering, for example, community development has been through the process of deciding how many functions should be in-house, how many should be outsourced. Is that, is, how long has that been since that question has been at least looked at or, or thought about for the finance director position? And I just raised the question for, as a, as a typical kind of management audit that is done fairly often when this kind of thing occurs. So that's my comment and a question. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Clark, but I can tell you from experience that our finance director, Susie Mears, does that on an ongoing basis, almost constantly.
So I think it's a very good question, and as you know from our, our budget reviews, we have restructured the finance department considerably, primarily by automating processes that were done by hand in the past, and so we've reduced the number of personnel that we have in the finance department. But the director position is absolutely essential and key, and it's essential that we have someone with qualifications similar to what Susie brought to the table to make sure that our reporting is done properly, that our finances are properly managed and so forth. And so I would strongly advise you to maintain that position as we go forward.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. I, I think that there, there was a really good point made about potentially outsourcing because outsourcing does help alleviate, like Mr. Wirek called them, legacy costs, i.e. entitlement, entitlements that continue after a person leaves the position, where with outsourcing and subcontracting, those burdens aren't laid on the city. And it's, through, through the years, one of the reasons that I've been voting no on the budget is because I've felt that there are ways that we could potentially cut costs in the finance department because I felt that the amount of money being spent there seemed excessive for the, for the size of the budget of the city. So I was wondering if, number one, you've investigated the potential, possibility of outsourcing some of the jobs, and also a review brought to the council would be nice for us to understand what has been changed in a report, how, how the finance department has been restructured over the last couple of years, and if there are some other areas we could potentially save more money for the citizens.
Councilmember Laura?
Madam Mayor, I, I would like to echo those, that request too.
Any other comments, questions? Motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
No, just directions.
Okay, all right, great.
Well, but as the, from our consent item, the item is a resolution which amends the salary schedule for the following management employees effective January 1, 2015, finance director and public works director.
Madam Mayor, I, I move to approve item E in the consent.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Madam Mayor, discussion?
Yes.
Just for the record, I will be voting no on this because I would like to have the report come before council before I approve, say yea or nay on this item.
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
And councilmember Laura requested item G be pulled, and that is Signal Street Storm Drain Section Replacement.
Madam Mayor, I decided to pull this item because I just want to make sure I understand this replacement of this deteriorating pipe. Is it just going to be the section where the Ojai Playhouse is from wall to wall, is it, or is there more deteriorating pipe along the street or vice versa?
This is the section on Signal Street next to the Ojai Playhouse. It, it runs beyond the length of the Playhouse, and actually it would be broken into two parts as we look at it now. One part would be a replacement, and the other part would be a slip lining. And if you'd like more detail on that, Mr. Grant could give you more detail.
And, and was this, did we already know about the deteriorating pipe before the, the incident happened there in front of the Ojai Playhouse, the breakage, or?
No, we, we, I, I think there had been some investigations historically, so we knew that it was one that we had to keep watching, but we did, Mr. Grant had it videoed after the incident to see what kind of shape it was in. And the reason this is coming forward right now is that the pipe is located in such a way that to replace it, you have to take out the sidewalk adjacent to the theater, and since that sidewalk's going to have to be taken out for the theater repairs, it makes sense to do both jobs at the same time. So this may not have been the normal sequence we would have done this job in, but it makes a lot of sense to do it now to save money.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion?
I move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Next on our agenda is public hearings. The first public hearing is a continued public hearing on the proposed fee schedule. Mr. Clark?
So thank you, Mayor, members of city council. We have been conducting a series of public hearings on our fee schedule because we've done a very comprehensive review of the fees, and it's really been done in three parts. One is a cost analysis where we've actually interviewed all the employees and examined how much it costs to provide the services that we provide, and we're allowed by law to charge 100% of the cost of service. So we also did a subsidy analysis to determine whether or not we should charge 100% or whether we should charge a lower percent. And then finally, we did some comparisons to see if we're within the range that other communities or other agencies are charging for similar fees. So at the last hearing, we looked at overhead charges, building and safety fees and grading fees. The primary change that came out of that meeting was the council's desire for us to structure a program to incentivize energy and environmentally progressive ideas. So when we bring this back for actual adoption, and we're not recommending that you adopt any fees tonight, we will include a proposal to restructure the building fees along those lines. This time, we're looking at administrative fees, development fees, which are also often called planning fees, traffic mitigation fees, drainage fees, facility and service fees, cemetery fees, and encroachment fees. And I'd like to just make a few comments on each of the categories, but not really go into them in too much depth unless there are specific questions. So the administrative fees, most of our fees are below the cost of providing the service, and in most cases, we are recommending that the fees be increased to the cost of providing service. One that I wanted to highlight is with the business license tax program, there's two components. There's a business license tax, which can only be changed by action of the voters, and then there's a fee for renewals or for the original application, and that fee can be set based on cost through resolution of the city council. And so we are recommending that that portion of the business license program be increased, and it hasn't been increased for quite a long time, to 100% of the cost. I also wanted to point out that generally, our philosophy in the city is full-cost recovery when services are being provided that benefit an individual, but when services benefit the community, we sometimes recommend a lower cost. And so typically, with the administrative fees, where we've recommended a lower cost, it's, for example, licensing bicycles. There, if we charged the full cost of licensing the bicycle, nobody would do it, but there's a community benefit to getting people to license their bicycles, so we heavily subsidize that. Also, providing agendas and copies of materials to the public, there's a public benefit to having an educated public and a public that has access to our materials, and so we recommend subsidizing that. The next category is development fees, and it's a super-long category because it's, it's all the things that fall generally into the planning department in terms of going for an entitlement. What we're doing and have been doing, and what is common in most communities, is that the smaller fees, and when I say smaller, I'd say $500 and less, are typically a fixed actual cost is either deducted from that deposit and then a refund provided at the end, or if the cost exceeds the deposit, a new deposit is required. And the reason for that is with entitlement projects, the amount of work that goes into an application varies substantially from application to application. So, charging an average fee wouldn't really be fair to someone who has a fairly simple project that wouldn't take a lot of work. And on the other hand, subsidizing a really complex project probably isn't appropriate either. So, for the most part, these fees are based on making a deposit and then having charges made against that deposit. Also, we want to structure them a little bit differently. In the past, we've had something called a core fee, which is non-refundable, and then a basic deposit above and beyond the core fee. And the core fee was intended to capture the costs of setting up a file and getting started in the event that someone were to withdraw the application mid-process. But that's a fairly unusual practice. It's more common just to have like a 10% non-refundable amount, and so we're proposing that approach instead. And we could answer questions that people may have about specific fees. Traffic mitigation fees are a little bit different animal. They're what's called a development impact fee. And a number of years ago, I believe in 2004, the county led an effort to create a development impact fee that funds traffic improvements, both in the county area and in the city area, that benefit new development. So, if you want to build a house, you're on an existing lot, you have an impact on the overall traffic system, and this fee is an impact fee that covers that cost. The ordinance and the rules that created that fee called for an annual adjustment to the fee based on the construction cost index, and the county did that every year, but for some reason, we never did do that. And so, we're 38% behind, and so we're recommending that we catch up to where we should be by making a 38% increase in those fees. The next category is drainage fees, and drainage fees are a new category that we haven't had in the past. And the reason for that is that in the past, drainage has been pretty much built into the grading fees, and the amount of work that was involved in evaluating drainage requirements was fairly straightforward and simple. But now, as regulations for drainage become greater and greater, all of the agencies are finding that drainage is becoming a separate area or a separate cost center. So, what we proposed here is that we institute fees that are similar to the types of fees that other communities charge for drainage, but they all be done on an hourly basis or a cost reimbursement basis. So, if our engineer is involved, it would be reimbursing the cost of our engineer working on the project. If a consultant was involved, which is often the case, it would be the consultant cost plus overhead. We would only do this if the amount of work that went into it exceeded what had been paid for the grading fee. And really, it's a way of monitoring what impact all these drainage fees have on us over time, and it may be that in the future, we go to fixed fees or deposits like some of the other cities have. But now, it's just a new area that we're exploring a little bit. The next one is facility and service fees, and these are primarily the fees that we charge for using our parks and public places for private purposes. I'm not recommending any changes to these at this time. Rather, I'm recommending that they be referred to the Park and Recreation Commission. And the reason for that is although most of our fees are charged based on full-cost reimbursement, typically, recreation and park use is considered a social benefit or a community benefit that imbues to the whole community, not just the individual who's using the facility. And so typically, we don't charge full-cost reimbursement for these types of things. And so, I think we want to use the Park and Recreation Commission and the people who attend those meetings as a way of getting feedback on what the appropriate fees might be in this category. So, really, we're just saying, let's keep these fees the same for the current year, give the PRC the rest of the current year to go through them, and then come back to when we do the budget next year with any proposed changes that come out of that process. So, there's two more categories. The cemetery fees are intended to pay the cost of operating the cemetery. However, as the cemetery fills up, we're generating less money, but we're still having to maintain the cemetery. So, we are doing some things about that. In this case, we're looking at the fees, and we're comparing those to the fees provided by, or charged by other cemeteries, and recommending some adjustments to those fees. But these tend to be private cemeteries, not public cemeteries, so we would not charge as much as a public cemetery. The other thing that we've been doing is the council budgeted money for a consultant to look at a master plan for the cemetery. And the purpose of that master plan, when it's developed, is to guide improvements to make it look better, but also hopefully to provide more places for urns, potentially in urn walls and things like that, so we have more places to sell and raise money to help with the operating costs. And then the final category is encroachment fees, and encroachment fees are fees for use of city property. And again, the encroachment fees fell behind, generally speaking, fell behind what the cost of service was, and so we're recommending that those be increased. One of the fees that I think has been brought up to you during public input in the past is when a utility company gets an annual permit to do trenching in the streets. We just had an annual fee, but we did not have a fee per trench to go out and inspect that trench and make sure it's properly backfilled. And we are now proposing that that annual fee also be added to, I mean, that per trench fee be added to the annual fee. So, those are the different categories and kind of a brief overview of what we've looked at there. And we're interested in public input either tonight, or if citizens have concerns and they aren't here tonight, we're glad to hear more, and we'd bring this back to you for adoption of the fees at the second meeting in September.
Councilmembers, have questions?
Yes, I have a question, a couple of questions. Under Master Fee Summary Benchmarks, page 2-3-8, I was wondering if you could explain to me the pretty astronomical change in fees for three items. Historic landmark plaque, landmark designation, and Mills Act processing. The historic landmark plaque's going from $450 to $7,797. The landmark designation didn't exist before, and it's now $5,024. And the Mills Act processing was originally $1,690, and is being proposed to go to $4,640. And I was wondering if you could explain to me these changes.
What's page 3-8?
2-3-8, Master Summary. There you go. Landmark designation, Mills Act, and historic landmark plaque.
So, again, in each of these cases, we've done a calculation as to what the actual cost is of providing the service, and recommended a deposit, and the cost that would be charged would be the actual cost if you were to stay at 100%. But if you feel that you need to, that for historical, because of the social benefits of historical items, you want to reduce that, we could look at that.
Yeah, I guess the one that perplexes me the most is the landmark plaque from $450 to $7,797. I can't imagine how much money or staff time would be taken to get a historic plaque made. So, I guess I just need a little bit more itemization or clarification of the details of how these fees were arrived at.
So, yeah, so if you go to the preceding pages, there actually is a cost calculation.
Okay.
So, on page 2-35, oh, I'm sorry. No, thanks.
Is that it? 2-23?
So, you'll be glad to hear that that was a typo.
So, the landmark, which one here?
It's a good example. If you look at the very top.
The plaque, okay.
So, if you look in the right-hand columns, we estimate how much time for each of the different personnel that are involved go into that process, and we come up with a total of 797.
Not 7,797.
But in the summary, there's an extra 7,000 there.
Right. Okay, so let's look at the other two. Maybe there's more typos here. The other would be, we're also talking the landmark designation and the Mills Act processing.
And so, that did come up to $5,000.
$1,000 for the planner, huh?
And so, and that's based on the amount of hours that actually goes into that process based on actual experience. So, it is, the landmark designation process actually does require quite a bit of staff time. So, again, part of the reason for bringing this up is to show how much it costs to do these things. But if the fee that comes out of that process doesn't make sense for some reason, now's the time to bring it forward so we can take a closer look at it.
And the Mills Act, that's a state designation, but the city would be involved in that particular process as well, which is Mills, so where's it?
So, that's 2-26. So, for example, right now, we calculated that the amount of, the fee covers 36% of the cost of that process.
Okay.
And if we were to charge 100%, it would be, it would go up from $1,690 to $4,640.
Okay, I think with the Mills Act, and this is my opinion on the Mills Act, I think that the full cost recovery is appropriate on that, because the Mills Act, the person who gets their house designated with the Mills Act gets an incredibly huge tax break, a property tax break, astronomical tax break. So, ultimately, the city loses tax revenue off of property tax with that. So, I'm comfortable with 100% cost recovery on the Mills Act processing. The plaque, clearly, we've figured out the problem with that one. But as far as the landmark designation of 5,000, I think that, I don't know if the rest of my colleagues would agree with me, but I think landmark designation is a really important thing in this community. There aren't that many houses that really fall under this category, and to preserve them would be really valuable for the community. So, for myself, I would like to hear from my fellow council members if they think that maybe in the landmark designation, we may consider a reduction in that fee in order to encourage people to be designated landmark, because $5,000 is rather a steep fee. So, I was wondering if anybody else has feelings on that matter.
I just have a question. Doesn't the landmark designation go before the Mills Act?
It does.
You have to have both, correct?
Yes.
So, it's really all part of the Mills Act. But they don't, the, how many homeowners are going to go through the process of having the property designated landmark and then not have the Mills Act designation? I don't think there's any that I know of.
Kathleen may have some input on that. I know it's possible to do.
Oh, it's definitely possible to do it, but I'm not sure why anybody would necessarily want to.
Madam Mayor, I may have a little insight into that. Also, with the Mills Act designation, the state has real strict requirements about what you can and cannot do to the house. You have to follow historic guidelines within it. You cannot do major remodels. You have to really keep it historically correct. So, somebody may want to have historic designation for whatever their purposes are, but they may not want to go as far as the Mills Act, even though they get a tax break, because they're going to be restricted, a lot more restricted in what they're able to do with their property. So, it doesn't necessarily follow.
But I think that they're restricted when they achieve landmark status, they're restricted. They can't do a lot of things.
That's a good question. How much more are they restricted with landmark?
I don't think, I don't think they're anymore, I don't think they're particularly more, and I see Kathleen can come up and really answer this.
I think it's more strict, but yeah, Kathleen, is the Mills Act more strict than the historic designation through the city?
Well, yes, it has requirements, things that you have to do. You sign a 10-year contract, and so they do a timeline of what they agree to do year by year of maintenance. So, yes, there's more performance. There's performance with the Mills Act. But in other jurisdictions where we had things, like you're talking about economies of scale, I think this is where you're going, that if I'm doing the land, if I'm already working on a landmark, and then I'm working on the Mills Act, I'm sort of doing the same work once, then I would suggest that you put a clause in there that just says if they're applied for together, that you just pay one fee, whichever fee it is, because I would agree with you, or as Rob would say, they pay the deposit, and then we work off the same, you know, the same deposit, because there is, you know, obviously, economies of scale. If I'm doing the work once, I'm doing it, and I just have two titles to it. I mean, there's a little bit more with the Mills Act. But I think sometimes what we have is, with one property here, we had a person that landmarked it, and then they subsequently came in for a Mills Act, so we actually did it twice. So, there is some benefit to maybe doing it all together, and we could work the fee that way. But yes, most people would want it together unless, for some reason, they didn't want to do, commit to a maintenance program, a 10-year maintenance program. But the benefits to getting Mills Act kind of really outweigh that.
Yeah, they do. Unless economically, you just aren't in a position to make that commitment at that time, you may not want to go forward with it, even with the property tax reduction, because the costs of restoring a historic home can be astronomical, even with a reduction in your property taxes.
Right, but you have to remember, too, also, that once you get that landmark status and the Mills Act status, there's also benefits that go through the building, the building requirements. They're also reduced, too.
That's true.
So, you know, the things, there's benefits to that part of it, too.
Yeah, because then with, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you have Mills Act or historic designation, at that point, you can, you are necessarily required to do the building code requirements for new construction or remodel in a home. You can do a historic resurrection of what it is instead, i.e. a different kind of foundation or a different style of window or...
Probably more along the lines of the Title 24, the energy type things and that type of thing. Yeah, it still helps you financially, because you're not having to bring certain parts of it up to today's code.
Yeah, which could be very difficult. Okay, thank you.
One more question, Kathleen. In the way the fee schedule is now, where you've got it broken out for the landmark designation of being one fee and the Mills Act another, if somebody came in and said, "I want my property to be designated landmark, because I want the Mills Act," is that just one fee now, or would that be both of those fees?
I think there's no fee right now for landmark.
No, you're correct, there isn't.
So, you know, and...
But what, but, okay, so let's say that the council institutes this fee for landmarking. Would it then be the Mills Act plus the landmarking, or just the Mills Act fee?
I think unless you make a, you make a specific notation in there that you're really going to get charged one deposit, remember, we always do, most things we're doing, deposits, so we're working on how long it takes us to process something. So, what, you know, I mean, you know, we're not going to charge them twice for the same amount of time. They only get charged once. But obviously, you know, there could be some clarification to that. Like I said, generally speaking, today, there's no fee for the landmark, because they want to encourage it, just like there was no fee for work permit, and what we tried to do was come up with how, you know, what it costs the city for us to do that work, and then leave it to your judgment whether or not, like Mr. Clark said, there's a social benefit to it. But, you know, we could make it clear in there, so the public really understands that we're not trying to charge them twice. I think that could be some clarification.
Madam Mayor? Maybe you could say landmark slash Mills Act is one, it's one fee of the $5,000 or something like that. And then within the application process, the person specifies whether they want just the landmark designation, or whether they're going to go through to Mills Act designation.
Mm-hmm.
Just a thought. Or again, back to the landmark, just a simple landmark designation, again, I'd like to encourage landmark designation, so I'm not really comfortable charging $5,000 for landmark designation. I'd rather have it be maybe a fee, like we don't have... I'd rather have it be maybe a fee, like we don't have one now, but maybe something a little more easy to swallow, and then have the Mills Act one be the larger fee.
So, th- these are helpful comments, and to the extent that things like this get pulled out, we'll bring back a separate analysis for you so that.
Okay.
There's more time to think about it.
I would, I would agree with that.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah, let's do that. Pardon me, I have one, I have one more thi- I have, I wanna go onto a different item, did you?
Yes, I did have a comment, Madam Mayor, about this, but I didn't know if you had a comment.
Just a quick comment. I would prefer to, the two items remain separate, but maybe with a notation under the landmark that if Mills Act is also being pursued, that the fee would not be duplicated, but I'd still like to see them remain separate. Councilmember Laura?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, on this topic, my concern and question is to staff is, how many of these applications are we dealing with? How many have we done in the past year, in the past two years? And then my other comment is, I know the Historical Preservation Commission has a list, so how are we gonna go through that list and encourage those properties to really come in and spend that money? I, I think it'd be really valuable for us to present in front of the Historical Preservation Commission also, for further review, and just for more public comment, because this is a, this is a tricky line item. Do the, they're getting a tax break, and the city is still bearing some of the costs, it's, it's really just a, to me, it's a real concern.
So, if the council wants to refer this to the HPC for input, we could do that as well.
I think we're talking though, in general, about not very many. I, I think, I think that's a good idea, but the number of homes that come up for landmark and historic, I don't know, one, two, maybe? So it is, it does not affect that many properties, and I think if houses do change hands, the, the owners would be aware that they are buying a home of historical significance, and would be keen to do that. The other thing is that, the thing with the Mills Act that's really kinda nice is that if they don't follow the timetable and do the restorative work as, as was agreed upon, then they lose their Mills Act status, and they do pay the taxes that are due on that home as though there was no Mills Act. So, the, the incentive for an owner to follow is very strong.
And also, just to get the Mills Act in the first place, you have to have a house that really has some justification for even getting that designation. So, there's probably not that many houses in this town that meet that qualification at all, unfortunately.
See, before we move on, because I know you had other questions, but I wanna be clear that I'm understanding the council, and that is, the council would prefer this section of the fee schedule to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission? Is that accurate?
Just on landmarks and, and Mills Act properties? When you say the section, how many are in this section?
No, it's just that.
Yeah.
It's just those three items that are, that have any relevance to the Historic Preservation Commission. I don't know whether fee, well, maybe, maybe their input on what they feel about the psychology behind having a fee with landmark designation might be valuable to us, whether they feel that would be a discouragement. But I also think that it's, it's appropriate to have a fee, nominal fee, I think that's appropriate, but, so maybe it would be a good idea to, to have them give us some feedback, because they have a better understanding. I know a couple of commissioners just went to a, a major symposium or seminar down in LA about landmarks and designation and stuff, and they may have some new information that would be really valuable, that they could give us some input on.
Is Mr. McClary here this evening?
I don't see him.
He was earlier.
Okay, the reason I ask is, I can remember the HPC going over these items.
I do.
When I was council liaison last time, and so we can send it back to them again and say, are you sure? Is that what I'm hearing, the council?
Maybe we just could ask Mr. McClary to review what it was that HPC said last time on this, and I don't want them to do it over again if we just didn't.
It takes a lot of time.
I think we, I think Mr. McClary can certainly verify what it is that they said and how recent it was, because I, that does set up a memory too.
It brings a bell to me too.
And if it, if three of us are remembering this, that tells me that they were discussing it for nine months.
That's about average.
I think so.
Okay.
Moving on to my other.
Did you have another comment on this?
I, I just wanted to say that it seems to me that if, I was never the liaison when they were discussing it at HPC, but many times we've talked about wanting to encourage landmark status on particular properties, because it does restrict the owner from being able to do things to it. But I don't think that much has come out of the HPC with regard to this, if these fees are as high as they are, because I don't think that that would have been, for landmark status anyway, would have been the decision of, or a recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission. So this ended up going in here somehow, despite their discussions.
Maybe. We don't know.
No comment.
Okay, but we really don't know at this point, and I haven't, I haven't really looked in the minutes and noticed anything recently. So, how does, Mr. Clark, how do you think it's best handled as far as getting input from, from HPC? If they haven't, if you discuss it with Mr. McClary, and he has an analysis of what they talked about, I don't think it needs to go back to them.
That would make sense.
But if they haven't, then it should. And of course, we need to get some.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get some comments from the public too, as part of the public hearing.
Councilmember Clapp, you have additional questions?
Yes, on page two dash six, four, trolley services. I remember in the past talking about the public being able to rent the trolley, and we were told at the time that there were some problems with that, and it wasn't available to the public. Now it appears that it's available to the public, so if that's indeed the case, I think that's great, and if, and if it's so, I think, I think I've maybe even seen small ads in the paper about it, or maybe not, but maybe there should be some way to get the public aware that this is now something that's available to them.
So, we did not look into these fees, because we're recommending that the facility fees be reviewed further by PRC.
Right.
So, I, I don't think we're actually able to rent the trolleys, because there are federal regulations about using equipment that's purchased with federal grants for, for competition with private sector.
I don't know what you're talking about.
But there, but there may be, Mr. Grant may be able to help me, because there could be an exception if we fully amortize the equipment.
Because I remember we had this discussion, didn't we, Greg?
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening. Yeah, there is opportunity to rent the trolleys, but it has to be advertised on a federal website, and if there's any objections for whatever cause, then we have to drop our use. So in the past, there's been a couple companies that have objected immediately when they find out about it. So, it's still a possibility that we could put it out there, but it takes a pretty fair amount of work to do it, and there's a pretty good chance it would be rejected or objected too, which means we have to drop it. So I think that concept was a little bit, to keep it alive, if somebody really wanted to, and if the council really supported it, we could try it, but it's just sort of keep it alive in the, in the fee schedule.
Thank you for the clarification. So this is just in here in case someday maybe we can do this. Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I did have a question about the annual fee that's on Section E for, let me find it. It was for, I think it was for encroaching or, the annual fee permit on, on two dash seven nine. And did you, and for, on the public right-of-way, construct, repair, modify, or demolish, is it, is this just, this fee in general, just to process the application of every, of every permit that comes for this, or is this, is this just a, not assuming that there's gonna be that many, or, could you explain it a little bit more?
Right, so, so this would be for Golden State Water or for the gas company where they have lines in the streets, and rather than charging them, historically, rather than charging them per excavation, we've just charged them a blanket fee for the year, so it's based on the average cost per year for us to administer that blanket permit. And then, under the current program, they're bringing back slips to show that they've properly backfilled with slurry and so forth. What we're proposing to add is a fee for actually going out and physically inspecting the trench to make sure that it's properly done. So the annual fee is, is just to cover the cost of administering all these things that happen throughout the year, and the per trench is for every single time they go out and dig up the street.
Oh, so there's two separate fees then?
That's what we're proposing.
One for inspection and one just to process the application that comes in, on the, on the average basis?
So, again, Mr. Grant could explain it in more detail, but there is work involved in all this trenching and monitoring it, and so that, that annual fee is intended to cover all the work for all the trenching throughout the course of the year, based on an average cost. We're adding a little bit more work by going out and physically inspecting the trenches every time, and every time we do that, charging a fee.
Okay, yeah, I just want some clarity, I just wanna make sure I understand that.
Right.
You know, any other questions, comments from council for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. I have one speaker card, Bob Daddy.
Thank you again. I would hope that you would hold off coming to some decisions and get this out in the public for maybe sixty to ninety days, and let people look at this. I've got some definite ideas that are a little crazy. I'm looking at the lot line adjustment, and you're able to get three hundred and thirty-eight percent of actual recovery. Pretty stiff, that's, we're pounding people pretty hard. When I take a look and to see what, an appeal to the council, an appeal to the commission is, if we were truly cost recovering, we'd get nineteen thousand eighty-seven dollars for an appeal to the planning commission. It would only be nineteen thousand three hundred and nine dollars as an appeal to the council. I think these are incredible numbers. Golden State Water has had in excess of a hundred and fourteen incursions into the street, plus the other problems. They're currently operating on a five hundred and fifty dollar annual permit. Charging them for the trenching and these other things is just unbelievably low. It should be a minimum of a thousand dollars in there, but rather than just how much, do what we always do with all the rest of these. If we gotta have an engineer out there at three hundred dollars an hour, and they're gonna be out there and go do six hours, I don't want those five hundred dollars, I want eighteen hundred. If we're gonna cost recovery, I don't want the residents subsidizing for-profit utility companies. It just doesn't make sense. These fee schedules seem to be a little wacky. I'm taking a look at one of these things, and it says that we're gonna continue to have a seven percent appeal recovery to the planning commission? Why is the community subsidizing this money? If we're actually spending that money, we're not recovering ninety-three percent of it, we're getting that ninety-three percent of that from somebody else that's not using us. I, I don't really like this process. I think what we should do is if you wanna encourage people to have bicycle licenses and encourage people to have pet permits, and we're talking about twenty or fifty dollars, not nineteen thousand dollars, you know, we can put that in there. Water permits, you know, we're gonna have some people in the audience not happy, but when you give away two acre feet of water on a permit that's in excess of six hundred and fifty thousand gallons, at a penny a gallon is what Golden State says, that's sixty-five hundred dollars worth of water. I think those permits ought to be ten or twenty-five thousand dollars for water permits, because over ten-year, a hundred-year period of time, which is what a home's gonna be worth, that's a million dollars. I don't think a ten thousand dollar fee on a fifty or a hundred thousand dollar well is that much. I think we need to adjust those, so please, don't make a decision, put these things out, let the community look at this thing for the next two or three months so we can really get a good look at it and figure it out. There's, there's lots and lots of numbers. Thank you.
Mayor, could, I just, I didn't want to respond to each of those, because we're taking notes of them, but I think one example that was made, was a, was a good educational example, and that's the lot line adjustment. So the lot line adjustment, right now, the current fee is three hundred and thirty-eight percent of the cost, and so the recommendation is to lower it to a hundred percent. So, although for the most part our fees were below full cost recovery, when we found fees that were above cost recovery, we are recommending reducing them, and that was one of them.
Randy Haney? Then I'll come back to council.
Good evening, Randy Haney, five one three Pleasant Avenue. I just wanted to get a clarification, we're charging Golden State Water District five hundred and fifty dollars a year, is, that's the annual fee charge, am I correct? Is that, is that?
Mayor, the, the, the current fee is about five hundred and fifty dollars for the annual permit. The proposed fee is, I don't remember exactly, but it's in excess of eight hundred dollars per year, and in addition to that, I think it's a hundred and seventy-some dollars per trench. So the fee will be quite a bit higher, and it is, we, in order to charge, the, the, the state law restricts us to charging a hundred percent cost recovery, and we have to document how we come up with that. So, in, in this study, we've done our best by interviewing the people who actually do the work to figure out what a hundred percent of the cost of these fees are, and that's our maximum, we can't charge more than that.
Well, is that fee based on a one-time use, a five-time use, a ten-time use, a hundred-time use?
So the, so the fee for, the annual permit is for the administration, for the average cost of administering an annual permit over the course of a year, and it does vary from year to year how many, how many trenches there are, and that's why we think it's a good idea to charge a per trench fee in addition. That'll, I think, even it out more.
And so I just, again, I'm just asking, the, the fee per trench is how much? Rob, can I help with that?
Yes. Yeah, just to help out with that a little bit, the annual excavation permit, it's true, has always been a standard fixed fee per year for that small excavations and repairs within the street, but any other larger excavations or bigger repairs that exceed sixty square feet, there's a separate fee on the next page, and that's a, it's based on how lit, large, how many square feet the excavation is, so there's a fixed fee, plus, a fixed fee, processing fee, plus an additional, and that varies as the excavation's gets bigger. So it's really those small repairs that were, that one annual fixed fee of five fifty, and that's what we were proposing to go to this annual fixed fee plus per blanket permit, you call it, every, every time there's an excavation on top of that. And I think that, at the rate they're removing right now, that would be in the five to ten thousand dollars for those small repairs, and in the projects, they really, varies greatly how big of a project they take on, but that's another five to ten thousand dollars in addition for typical years.
Thanks, Greg. My observation is Golden State's one of the biggest abusers of our streets as far as digging them up and making repairs, so that was my concern, is the fact that maybe we were charging them five hundred and fifty dollars one time a year, so I guess my next question is, on the blowout in front of the Playhouse, do we have any costs related right now as to how much time city staff spent on inspecting, interacting, and closing up that hole? That would just be something that I'd like to know, and to see how it relates to that five hundred and fifty dollar fee, and the square footage fee that we're talking about charging them. Thank you.
And I would like to comment that. And I would like to comment that I, to a couple of speakers urging us not to adopt this tonight, and it's not our intent to adopt this tonight. But I also wanted to mention that this first came before the council, please correct me if I'm in error, because I am in error often, this came before the council with the budget process. So we're talking June. We have held a public hearing, we have continued the public hearing, so this isn't surprise information. This is information that has been available to the public since June. We have been constantly revising certain sections of it as we receive better information, and even tonight, it is still an ongoing process. So I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. This is not something that has come before the council, and boom, we're gonna pass it. And that's all the speaker cards I have. Anyone else from the public wish to, Mr. Wirick?
I just have a quick question. I'm, I'm trying to understand, it's quite a document. And just as an exemplar of the kind of question I have, it'll go back to page two dash two three landmark buildings work permit, that currently is at zero and is proposed to go to two thousand five hundred and forty dollars, another one of those big jumps for a work permit. And my question is, something like that, a work permit, seems to have a real range of scale of effort on the part of staff. You might have something very, very minor that might end up costing less than that estimated cost, or something much more, in, depending upon the scale of the project. And I'm wondering, is, is this in fact a deposit? Is that what it's intended to be? The two thousand five hundred and forty, from zero to two fifty, two thousand five hundred and forty, if it's in the nature of a deposit, it does then the ten percent, does that set the ten percent non-refundable threshold that's also in the fee schedule, where it says that, you know, a deposit is only refundable ninety percent, I believe? So if I'm reading this right, and I'm asking to be corrected if I'm wrong, basically we're saying anybody wants to do work on a landmark building has to put up two thousand five hundred and forty dollars, and the most they'll get back is to, is, the most they'll get back is less two hundred and fifty-four, even, even if it's a very minor piece of work. Am I understanding this correctly? That's my question. I don't under, quite understand how this is supposed to work in terms of a work permit with such a scale and range of possible work involved, from very minor to very major.
Mr. Clark, would you like to answer to that?
Yes, absolutely. So, so Mr. Wirick is correct, the, the fee is a deposit, but he's also correct that we have proposed that the non-refundable portion be ten percent. Another possible approach to that is that we just keep track of our hours and bill them for what we have accomplished at the time they withdraw their application, if that happens, rather than using the ten percent. Or maybe we do that when the fee gets to a certain level.
I, I would like to comment that one of the reasons that we asked for a deposit upfront is because there have been instances where the city was unable to collect fees that were, the work was done, and then they were billed, and the, a couple of parties have just said, too bad. So that's one reason we collected upfront now.
It seems to me charging the ten percent to hold is, would come out a lot cheaper for the person asking for the permit than charging per hour, because let's say that, you know, ten percent, suppose staff spent ten hours on something already, you know, probably the fee would be a lot more than the two hundred and forty dollars.
So let, let me suggest this. It seems like this might be an area where more information would be helpful, and, and what I'd like to do when I bring this back is to find out a little bit more information about how other cities are handling this, whether they're using a ten percent, or whether they're using some other system, and that'll help you make a better decision on it.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Laurel?
Also, I was the liaison to the planning commission last, about a week ago, and they were talking about how that applicant came up with the work permit. And they were requesting a variance, but the thing is that, that they needed, either way, even if the, the planning commission didn't approve a variance or encroachment, sorry, encroachment, then they still needed to go through the HBC because of the work permit that's mandated with having a Millsak, Millsacks or a landmark status. So it, it is very tricky, and this is, again, I think this should go back to HBC if not, to get, not, not for their input, but at least to hold the, uh, public hearing, people that are interested, just to get more public comment, just for that sole reason, I think that it's important to, to include this also, if it's determined that they have not talked. But I, I think that it was just made aware by staff that this is how they should process these type of permits when they have a landmark or Millsack status, so.
Okay, anyone else in the public wish to speak on this issue? Meg?
Hi, Megan Goodwin, three oh four North Montgomery. I just want to say, as far as the public utilities things go, obviously having like sort of a basic fee for line maintenance and inspection and stuff annually is a good idea, but maybe if, if it's an, you know, one of these blowouts where they haven't done any maintenance or inspection in years, and then it just blows up, they should be fined more, you know, have a higher fee for repairing what they should have been maintaining all along. But, you know, you don't want to penalize them upfront and make it impossible for them to just do their routine maintenance inspection stuff. Thanks.
Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing, come back to council.
Madam Mayor, real quickly, on the, back on the well, the comment about the cost of a well permit, my understanding is, and Mr. Clark, you could clarify this for me, it's about cost recovery for doing a permit, Mr. Clark? It's about cost recovery for doing a permit with the, with the, with a well permit. You can't charge more than that by state law? Because if you, because, the comment was made, and I may be wrong, I think Mr. Daddy said something about how drilling a well is gonna be an increase in value, a huge value for this property, so therefore, the fee should be greater. Was that what you said?
Just like the Millsack.
Right, so are you, now, with these fees, you're saying that there's a guideline that we have as a city, is what we can charge? We can't, that would be not allowed by some sort of statute, right?
So the, the permit fees that we charge are intended to recover the cost of processing the permit. So if someone applies for a project that requires design review, that takes staff time.
I understand that, but you cannot do more than that by law, right?
And so by law, what the law says is that you can charge a hundred percent of the cost, but no more.
Right.
So, and we have to, and so what we've done here, and what we have to do, is we have to document how we came up with that cost. So if anyone challenges the fee, we can, we can explain.
Right.
Math, but you can't just raise a fee to, to create a barrier, but you could lower one to create instead of.
Right, 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 okay, that's interesting. And, and I've got, empathize with the idea of, I saw the amount of acre feet that these, both these wells were requesting, and I thought, that's a lot of water for domestic use and landscaping, particularly when we're under mandatory water restrictions. And I, this water issue's huge, and one thing California has is, everybody owns their water underneath them. It's one of the only western states where anybody can drill in their, on their property if they want. And it's causing a huge problem in this state right now, because so many people are putting wells in, and they're sucking the, the aquifers dry, and it's causing, actually, this is really interesting, and I'm gonna just inject this, because this is huge to me, and I learned this, and I, I really want to tell people about it, it's called subsidence. Aquifers are big wells under the ground, and when you start sucking a lot of water out of there, the water was holding up the earth, well, when the water goes, the earth starts collapsing. And in the Central Valley, there's pictures of people standing next to well pipe, and the well heads like forty feet above them, because the earth has collapsed as much as forty or fifty feet. So the reality is now, that aquifer no longer exists, it's got forty or fifty feet less of capacity. So when you start overdrafting water, you lose capacity underground that is never, ever going to be recovered. So the state of California allows you to drill no matter what. So this, there's gonna be a well permit that came, did it come before some consent items, or is this coming before, it's a separate item? We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna be asked to vote on whether we can issue a well permit for somebody to drill, two people in town to drill wells. And that mean, we cannot deny them by law, because we have to let them, because it's a right. And hopefully, there's legislation coming down the pike that is gonna maybe remedy this problem, because if we don't address it, we're going to be without water in this state. So that's just a little aside. So in, in Mr. Daddy's comment about the concern about these wells, I think it's well founded, and it's, and it should be on everybody's radar now, understanding that every time somebody drills a well, this is what's occurring. And this particular valley, well monitoring is mandated, but there's really not much enforcement of it. And so we really don't know how much water people are sucking out of the ground. We're supposed to tell, they're supposed to tell when they have a well, but they don't necessarily do it. And they're not really being charged that much to do it. So we're really stressing the valley every time we punch another well in the ground. You are dying to say something.
Can I make a point of clarity, because we're kinda off a little?
No, no, I don't think so.
I've closed the public hearing.
Sorry.
It's time for council comments.
So anyway, I, that, is that an aside? That's why I want to explain that we don't have a choice on this as far as the well permit goes. So that's it, I'm done.
That's another, another item, I think we're still on the fee schedule.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Little diatribe, that's all, sorry, apologize.
Any other questions, comments regarding the fee schedule?
Madam Mayor, I just, I think that, that as a philosophy, we should take the, the basic concept of a hundred percent cost recovery, and look at that across the board, to see what they, see what these costs really are. And then if there's an area that we want to incentive, whether that be landmarking or whether it be bicycles, then we can look at reducing it. But I think we really have to look at, what is the, what is the cost to the city to recover a hundred percent? And then, if we see what it really is, then we can decide on what the fee should be, if it's not a hundred percent. But I think the basic philosophy should be a hundred percent recovery. And particularly with the, with the public utilities, it should be a hundred percent for sure. I, it's beyond me why we're charging so little. I mean, that should definitely be a hundred percent. I don't even know whether that seventy dollars per trench is an adequate amount. So I would hope that we look at that very closely.
And before we move on, I, I just must comment that our, our his, finance director, Susie Mears, has been advocating a hundred percent cost recovery since she has been at the city. Any other questions, comments regarding the fee schedule? Mr. Clark, do you need any more direction from us?
Nope, but if there are any other questions that come up, either from the, on the part of the council or the public in the next couple of weeks, we'd be glad to hear those.
And Mr. Daddy, did the comment, Mr. Daddy, did the comment you wanted, don't get up yet. Did the comment you want, wanted to make have to do with fee schedules, or did it have to do with water?
It really had to do with fee schedules.
Then come on up. Three minutes.
No, I don't need that long. One had to do with fee schedules, and I want to clarify, and I want to thank Council Clapp. If, if I go to build a, a something, I need to tell the city how much that something is worth, and I get a permit based on the value. That's how we've done that, that's what I was trying to say. It wasn't necessarily about a blanket, Golden State, well drilling, you know, here's the thing. It had to do with the value. We charge based on the value. What's the roof gonna cost to replace, thirty grand? Boom, they hit ya. That's what I was trying to explain. There we go. So I, I don't understand, yeah, I know we can only do the health permit, yes, I know, I've done a number of wells myself, but I'm saying is, you know, you put a ten thousand dollar structure on a, a property, you have to pay the permit based on the cost. If you have a hundred thousand dollar well, we're getting a hundred bucks. It was just, it was a question I had, because I'm not understanding how these fees correlate to what we're actually doing. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have one question, I don't know whether you know this or not, Bob, but maybe you do. What, if somebody has, if somebody does drill a well, do you have any idea what the assessor does in terms of an increase of the property tax based on the value of the well?
It should be no more than the cost, but who knows what the cost is, and nobody knows what the depth is.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to comment, if I am adding a room addition on, and I need a permit for the room addition, the city doesn't weigh what my permit's gonna be according to how much value is in that addition. The only thing that, once it's all done, then the, the tax structure of my house will be increased to include the new addition. So I don't, I don't, if I get a permit for a room addition, I'm paying for the permit, for the inspection, for the permit. The city's, does not know the value, that's gonna be up to the county tax codes. And my tax will be higher, but I'm not charged for my permit based on the value that will add to my house, that's nonsense.
Any other comments, questions? We are still on fee schedule.
I'd like to have some clarification on that, please.
So, so last hearing, we talked about building permits. In, in building permits, the fee is based on the value, it's not, so it's a function of the value. The value's part of the formula. And what we said is that we would use ninety-five percent of the value that the county uses, because we're more efficient in the way we process our, our building permits.
So value definitely is part of the permitting process?
Yeah, for a building permit.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, then I, I misunderstood. How could it, how can the city determine the value, they're gonna decide that the roofing is, I'm gonna use roofing that's thirty dollars a square foot rather than ninety dollars a square foot, and I get a permit based on what I'm putting on the tiles? How does that, how does that equate with the city charging per square foot?
So there's, there's a value per square foot that varies depending on the type of construction, whether it's commercial or residential, and that's the value that's used for the building permit, unless the applicant demonstrates a different lower value through bids and so forth, but that rarely happens. So there, there are tables that are put together by the building industry that indicate what the normal or the estimated construction cost is for these different kinds of construction, and it's just a matter of applying that formula to come up with the building permit fee.
I, I don't quite get that.
I thought it would be per square foot.
It is.
Okay, so it, doesn't the square foot that change because I'm putting in marble tile rather than? Vinyl tile?
So I, I don't think so, actually, I think, there's a, there's a, there are, there's a table that has different values for different types of construction, so there's a value for residential construction, there's a value for commercial construction, so on and so forth.
But it is not detailed as far as the expense of the, that's what I'm saying, the type of tile I'm putting on my roof or my floor is not going to change what, what the permits cost.
I believe that's correct.
That's what I meant by value.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
So, Mr. Clark, is it unheard of to have a well permit based on the value of the well?
So, so the well permit that we're looking at is, it's kind of like the entitlement process for the planning department. So we're, we're not looking at a building permit for a well, we're looking at a, an entitlement permit for a well.
Is there, is it unheard of to have, have a permit also for an improvement?
So I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Grant how exactly this works in terms of the county's role in inspecting the wells when they're built.
As far as the construction of the wells, right, we, the same contracts with the county of Ventura for the construction quality of the well, to make sure that the, all the seals are made properly and is constructed properly, and the groundwater quality is protected properly.
And so, so does the county charge a fee for the inspection and the processing of that?
Yes, they do. And they keep records on that as well, and I think that might be the basis of the appraised value, but I'm not certain that they transfer that to the appraisers office. appraiser's office.
So that would be over and above the, the, the cost recovery for processing a permit?
Right.
Over and above would be a fee for the value of the well per foot drilled, or something of that sort? As an, is considered an improvement to the property, as an addition would be considered as an improvement to the property? Is that ever done? Yeah?
Yeah, maybe I could help. Um, the building permit fees based on construction cost, or called valuation, is the, is, is a very narrow exception to the rule, the law, that we cannot charge more than our cost of processing. And, and if it is a charge for more, it's deemed to be a tax. And as a tax, it has to go to the voter. So that's, that's, so any charge in excess, any charge we impose in excess of our cost of processing a regulatory permit, where, these are all regulatory permits. This is public health and safety, police power permits to ensure that the well is drilled properly, and then it doesn't contaminate the groundwater, or where the building is built safely, or the trench work is done safely. These are all regulatory, police power permits. And, and so it, because if you charge anything more than that, it's deemed to be a tax, and that's illegal.
But you're saying with construction is the one exception?
And I was gonna say, yeah, and the building code, but also, there has been a movement, and there's been Superior Court litigation up and down the state, um, with folks challenging the, the uniform, the California Building Code, valuation-based
Fees.
fees, for just that reason, that it costs, it doesn't cost anymore, the process, the, the argument is, to the process anymore, uh, you know, the, the, the more expensive the construction cost, doesn't that mean it takes any more time to plan, check it?
And that's currently in the courts?
It's been up and down, there's been cases going both ways. Um, the problem is, it's been, it's authorized by the state legislature, it's built into the uniform, the California Building Code, and been authorized by the legislature. Um, but it has, that, that concept has been challenged for just that reason, because we have a lot of, of law that says we, you know, that, that any fee over, or, or the, over the agency's cost of, of regulation is a tax. So-
So basically, you're saying that you, we cannot charge anymore for a well?
No, because we're not, yeah.
That's where I'm getting, that's, that's the bottom line I'm trying to get to.
That's the bottom line. Everything we do.
It's the answer to this question. Can we or can we not charge more for a well than the processing fee?
No.
And the answer is no. The only way, place we can do that now, by law, is with, with, with building and construction. So the, there's your answer, Bob.
Voter tax.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
So I did, I did want to qualify what Mr. Fletcher said a little bit. What we have done, and what a number of other cities have done, when they've done the kind of study that we've done, is that we look at the overall revenue collected for their, our building permits versus the overall cost of our building permit processing, and make sure that that does not exceed 100%. And so the reason that we went to 95% of the county valuation instead of 100% is because that's the number that we could justify based on our actual costs. So even though there's some challenge out there to the methodology that's used for spreading the cost among all the different things that are built, we're not profiting in our building department. We're covering our costs. That's our goal.
And I guess my better judgment, I just can't resist, uh, to my perception, my way of thinking, we can charge, and we're still on water well permits, we can charge what it costs the city of Ojai to process an application for a water well. We cannot charge an applicant what it might be worth to that applicant 10 years from now. We can only charge for the cost to the city for processing the application. Are we ready to move on yet?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item.
Water well.
Is request to construct two water wells. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Grant will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this public hearing is to review and consider approval of two water well applications. As, as background, uh, number one, the local Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, otherwise known as OB-GMA, has reviewed the application and, and has no objections. The county provides the required engineering inspections, as we were just discussing, under contract with the city. And the local water agencies, Golden State Water Company and Ojai Flow, were notified of this public hearing. And these water wells fall within the CECL guidelines for an exemption. Uh, the specific applicant information is listed down in the staff report with maps, and includes, number one, a private residence, Peter Ramming, at 251 Saddle Lane in the Persimmon Hill tract. And that's for landscape, irrigation, and domestic use, and at approximately two acre feet per year of usage. Secondly, there's a commercial site, the BH Holding, at 403 Bryant Street, and that's for landscape irrigation, hence approximately two acre feet per year. Uh, staff recommends approving the well application based on the lack of objection from the OB-GMA, which we should point out, historically was established during the drought of the early 90s to assure adequate water supply within, in the valley. So it really, at that time, was considered to hand off the responsibility of assuring proper use of the water by the OB-GMA. And, uh, the memo distributed by the city manager outlines a few options that are available to, uh, the council as well, other options which could be pursued additionally. And that's my staff report.
Any questions from council for staff?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Grant. Could you explain exactly what you process? Is, is this just the application that you process, the notice of a exemption? Or what, what materials do you review?
There's a fairly extensive application. I don't remember the exact number of pages, but approximately 12. And it details everything from the construction type, the approximate depth of the well, the water usage, and, uh, trying to think of other factors, primarily those type of items, and that is forwarded to OB-GMA for their consideration as well when they review it. I should mention that OB-GMA at this time, as far as we're aware, is not a very substantial review. It's a very cursory review, and, uh, it doesn't go to the board for approval or any such thing. It's just a cursory review.
Mayor, could I ask Mr. Grant to go through the options that were listed in the supplemental information?
Please.
Because that's, yes.
Okay, and, uh, and if, for the public, if anybody's interested, they're available in the, the foyer of the council chambers as well. And, uh, so the following options are available. Number one is to approve the applications based on lack of objection from OB-GMA, which we have at this time, and other water agencies and public, and the public regarding the water supply. Relying, in this approach relies on OB-GMA and the county permit process to protect the water supply from contamination and suitability, assure suitability. The second option is to approve the applications and request further input from OB-GMA and the water agencies, so we could still go out and pursue additional information, respond, and return to the council with additional information about availability and the protection of the water supply within the basin. The third option would be continue the matter and request further input from the OB-GMA and the water agencies about the impact of these wells, and the wells in general that are happening. I should mention that we have requested this information approximately a year ago, I think, when the Ojai Valley School drilled a pretty substantial well out there. We investigated this. And their consultant hydrogeologist at that time felt that there were certain benefits to spread the well, uh, actually, just the taking, I guess, from the, from the water well base, from the water basin, that instead of having one well drafting from one location, it spreads out the drafting, and there's certain benefits of spreading out that. But obviously, that's a hydrogeologic benefit, but not, not necessarily a water, uh, usage control benefit. And lastly, there's an option to deny the applications outright based on new evidence about the water supply. But I think as legal counsel has given input, there needs to be very specific reasons for denying the well permit. That's it.
Any questions from council from Mr. Grant? Thank you, Mr. Grant.
I have a question. How much is an acre foot of water?
Approximately 325,000 gallons.
Now, how much does the average family use, and, and, uh?
I believe typically, an average family, do you have statistics on that? Okay. I believe, and feel free to correct me, but I believe an average household would consume three to 500 gallons per day. And feel free if I get anybody who's better versed on this, you know?
About a half acre.
Well, 260 per day, you're saying?
269.
269. So I've heard numbers of 300 or so, and I know sometimes with larger irrigated lots, you certainly use more water. This water, if you converted the two acre feet, 650,000 gallons divided by the number of days in a year, that's roughly 1,800 gallons per day. So-
So this, this guy wants to use 1,800 gallons a day of water? What is he growing on his land? Is he growing a fern garden, or what? That's an awful lot of water.
I think the Persimmon Hill tracts do have significant acreage, as well as irrigation potential up there. And I think also-
Maybe banana trees or something. That's just an incredible amount of water. I have never said yes to a well for the 11 and a half years I've been on council, so I'm not gonna say yes to that. But since I've always been in the minority, we never denied the well. So here, suddenly in the water shortage, and OB-GMA apparently is not, uh, tasked with necessarily, or has the money to, to actually measure it, but can we, we could perhaps ask to continue the matter and request further input from OB-GMA, but I'm gonna say no. And I've said no all along.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I remember the first well that came when I got on council. I was always confused because of the process. There was always given just a short amount of information, and my understanding, we do have a water well, but that kind of has been trumped because of the formation of this agency. And still, I was always perplexed with the lack, with not enough information given. And for me to be able to get, and on top of that, it's been in my understanding that we really don't have a right to deny it.
Right.
I mean, that's just plain simple, the law. But I, for me, I just think that I would love more information from OB-GMA, just because of the drought and, and their reasoning. I, I just think that it, I would, give me more of a peace of mind, even though I, I don't even have a right to deny it, so.
Madam Mayor? You know, I'd have to agree, Mr. Laura. OB-GMA is here to guard our water. And I think by including them in this discussion, um, we would begin this dialogue, because we're not, this is not a problem that's gonna go away. And we need to start empowering OB-GMA. Uh, we, we have at OB-GMA started monitoring these individual wells, and require well owners to report their usage, but a good many of them refuse. And that is one of the major ways that we monitor our groundwater, is knowing how much is being taken out. So I think, I think it would be really good to start having more of a dialogue with them, and, and come back and have, bring this before OB-GMA and say, okay, let's, let's start getting this buggy rule on here. What are we gonna do about this? Because, um, I agree with Councilwoman Smith, this is an outrageous amount of water. Two, that's enough, that's a foot of water over an acre, two feet of water spread over an acre. And, and that's just outrageous. When you're asking the rest of the community, mandatory water restrictions now in this, in this community, mandatory, we're no longer supposed to do water, or we're not supposed to do much of anything anymore outside with water. And at the same time, somebody's gonna be punching a hole in the ground and sucking out two acre feet to water's wand up on Persimmon Hill? That's really offensive to me. So I agree, I think we should, um, and with that, I would make a motion to continue-
We're in the public hearing.
Oh, we're still in the public hearing, I apologize. So I won't make a motion.
Later.
Later.
Yeah. And, um, I have concerns also. And that is, my concern is, or my question is, is OB-GMA doing what we intended for them to do? Has it just been, has it just become a performa organization? Are they really doing the things necessary to protect and preserve the water quality here in the valley? And I'm saying all of this because I too would like to hear a report from OB-GMA, because I am concerned we're putting too many wells in the ground. We're not gonna be able to sustain those.
And Madam Mayor, as the director on the OB-GMA, I would be more than happy to go to the next meeting and request that they, we, um, have potentially Jordan Kerr come and give a report about what, uh, actions are being taken by OB-GMA to guard the groundwater in the valley. There's a lot of things that are being done. A lot of it has been about revenue and the ability to, um, to take certain actions. Also, there's, uh, been a very soft approach to well monitoring. There was an ordinance that was finally drafted and passed, requiring well monitoring and reporting. Um, but as far as enforcement and finding of not having somebody report, there's been a reluctance on the part of the board as a whole to step up the enforcement process. I think the will to start putting more pressure on well owners is increasing, and I suspect in the near future, there will be more muscle being exerted by the OB-GMA, but at this point, that's not happening. So I would be more than happy to, to request that we have some sort of report brought forward by, uh, somebody from the OB-GMA to explain what we've been trying to accomplish.
And I, I am going to open the public hearing in just a moment, but I have one other comment. I would, I would like to see our staff pursuing right now findings that would allow this council to consider denying a well permit.
Madam Mayor, just one more comment, and, and I've had the pleasure of sitting in on, on some of OB-GMA, uh, meetings, and there's definitely a lot of knowledge in that agency. There's a lot of capacity of doing good work. But it also gets muddy because we contract with the county. So, uh, the county isn't really enforcing it. So I, on top of that, it's, it's, it's not just the agency, it's a county too. The participation of, is vital to having these wells monitored. So it, it's, it's pretty complex, uh, relationship, so.
But we do, but we do now have the ordinance, and we do have the ability to enforce. And that, that's the division, because yes, we have been dependent on the county on this, and they're not very supportive. But that is one of the things that the OB-GMA has the ability to do, is to have policy in place that they can do more enforcement. And I think that if the city starts encouraging the OB-GMA to, you know, exercise a little muscle, I think it would be really valuable. Because we do need to take control of the water in this valley. And I agree with, with you, Madam Mayor, that, that we really do need to start seeking whether there is any, um, I'm sorry, the terminology.
I asked for findings, but that may not be the right-
Findings, findings, yes. That may not be the right word. But I, I agree, because there's a tremendous number of wells in the eastern that are sucking sand, and it's, 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 and the, the lake's almost at 50%. And that's because people are taking water from the lake because their wells are dry. And Miners Oaks has been, two years running, have been taking 100% of their water out of the lake after a very brief period of time. And that's not getting any better.
And I have one other question, that I really am gonna open it up for our public. Because of the, the state mandates, because of our local mandates, because of the draft, the draft, the drought here in the eastern states, California specifically, are those enough grounds to, um, impose a moratorium on wells? You probably don't answer that right now, but I'd like to throw that out there.
If I can make one brief comment, in terms of where you're going with this, and I, is, I wanted to bring the focus back to the, the ordinance, or the ordinances. And as it's, in Mr., in the manager's memo, it says, there was really three grounds, three purposes of the ordinance, which is where you'd make your findings. One is that, is that it prevents contamination and pollution of the groundwater. Two, to sure, assure that, that water obtained from wells within the city are suitable for use in public, uh, public health issue. And the third is, a continued adequate supply of drinking water to the citizens of Ojai. So, not abundantly clear what we meant by that when, when this was adopted, but obviously, that's where the focus has to be. And we need, and what you need to make findings is evidence.
Yes.
Um, and, and obviously, we need evidence that, what you would need is have evidence that, that these wells, together with all the other dra, uh, drafting going on in the basin, would affect the ability for, for, really for Golden State Water to be able to adequately provide their water service to the city. That's where you'd want- water service to the city. That's where you'd want to look. And I think, yes, there's at least, if there's a sense that the council doesn't want, just doesn't want to deal with wells right now because of the drought, that is the type of situation that you would be appropriate to consider a moratorium. If you just don't want to grant the permits, it's better to adopt a moratorium than to just deny permits for a broader reason.
Madam Mayor, I think with water in general, I think this is a real important question to be brought before council, not just for drilling wells, but for development in general. I think we need to consider the possibility of a building moratorium at this point until such time that the drought ends, or we come up with an adequate supply of water. I think that's another thing that I'd like to have brought forward, is the question of, do we now want to impose a building moratorium in this community? When we're insisting on, we have mandatory water restrictions in a community, it seems to me inappropriate to grant any more building permits when the citizens right now are being told that they can't water. We can only water twice a week. That means citizens can no longer grow their own food in their yard. And to me, that is not providing an adequate supply of water to the citizens, or, and to me, that's jeopardizing the health and welfare of the community when citizens are no longer allowed to water and grow their own food. And to me, I would really like to bring forward before council, the potential of having a citywide moratorium on any building or well drilling until such time as we believe that there's an adequate supply to renew permits and drilling of wells.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yeah, one comment for Mr. Grant. As part of the application process, does the applicant have to provide any kind of a hydrologist report?
No, the answer is no. They basically provide, generally contractors that are going to drill the wells, complete the application, it's somewhat technical. And then OBGMA, I believe, has their hydrogeologist, Jordan Kerr, do a brief review. But I think he has kind of a standard template, as long as it stays within the general parameters, which most wells do, they're approved. And yeah, even the county, I think that's really technical construction details. So I don't think we're really seeing any hydrogeology-type reviews.
Okay. So my question is, is that something that we could require? If we need to have findings to deny a well, is that something that we can require a hydrologist's report, in essence, to probably do the job that groundwater management agencies should be doing?
Since our ordinance allows us to consider the impact on the availability of water to the rest of the city, I would say yes.
So that's something that I think we really ought to consider. Would the application have the applicant provide us with the professionally-prepared report as to what impact it's going to have on the groundwater?
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have three speaker cards. Bill Miley?
Bill Miley, North Signal Street. I have a lot of things to say, but most of them have been said by members of the council. I'm really surprised and somewhat impressed. We're kind of coming to this quite late. I've been going to meetings of the Basin Agency for years, not sequentially, but started ten years ago. And I would like to make a few points that would support item number three, option number three, which is continue the matter and request further input from the Basin Agency. I would also like to respond to Councilman Lara's comment. I'm not a lawyer, but I think you have a right to deny. I was going to make the point Mr. Fletcher just made, that the municipal code says you're obligated to ensure continued adequate supply. That's the answer. And then Councilwoman Clapp just said, supply, well, I'll turn into my words, supply is the foundation for health, safety, and welfare, and you're protecting that, too. So that's it. A couple years ago, I was wondering what the Basin Agency did when they gave a permit and sent a message to you. And I talked to Mr. Grant about that. But I also talked to the staff person who does that at the Basin Agency a couple of years ago. And the permit, in my understanding, does not go to the board, never goes to the board, or hasn't gone to the board. It goes to this administrative staff person, and they make sure that the county has approved it, they register the well, and they also make sure that there's a meter on the well, and that they report the amount of use once or twice a year. That's the permit, folks. They don't say anything about the impact on the groundwater supply. So, I was looking at the mission statement, and as Mr. Clark said, if you want to, just let me read the first long sentence. "It's the mission of the Basin Agency to preserve the quantity and the quality." Well, they're actually metering the wells. And I was there when they talked about the number of people who haven't metered their well, and they were discussing how to go about it. They finally did. But I would like to also enter evidence that one of our adjoining groundwater management agencies, the Fox Canyon one...
Let's finish up, Bill.
Okay. I need another minute, please. The Fox Canyon Groundwater Basin Agency is bigger than ours, and it deals with the Ventura area. They have, on their website, they have a question and answer page. And item number twelve is, what's an extraction allocation? They have, apparently, an ordinance and regulations that deal with extraction allocations. And the answer is, an extraction allocation is the amount of groundwater that one is allowed to extract without paying a surcharge. So I would suggest that you ask the city manager to look into that, to see whether Ojai Basin has an extraction allocation process. Because they have a very big one in Fox Canyon on irrigation, and also on domestic. Because if they do, they're doing more, Fox Canyon is doing more than we are, and we should be doing it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Bob Daddy?
I ran into one of the people on the OBGMA, and I asked a question. Are all of the water users with wells in compliance? And the answer was no. I said, aren't they all mandatorily by legislation that Carl Hunziger did mandated to have a meter? And the answer is yes. Is it being enforced? No. So I asked that director, who was the oversight? Was it the Attorney General? Why? And this is not about this, these applicants here. This is something that went on long before. We've given much bigger allocations. We gave a much bigger one to the school, and we gave a hundred and fifty percent bigger to one just up from your house, Councilman Blatz. That was three acre feet, and it was a much smaller lot. And we're all over the place, we have zero standards. But let me ask you a question. How are we going to know that the two acre feet applied for is what's been extracted? When the OBGMA isn't doing their job, they're not following their mandates, and all of these wells do not have meters. Maybe we can have our attorney do something and look at our permitting process. When I go to get a permit from the city, I'm given a permit. I don't get to use it until I have a completion. Maybe we need to have a monitor, and we find out that somebody applies for two, and they use six acre feet. Nobody's watching that. Maybe they apply for two, and they use a half an acre foot. That's something that's important for us to understand in where we're doing with the overall use. So you have a number of hundreds of these things running around, doing what they're doing. It would be just like Paul Robey over at the Chevron Station, not having a meter on the gas pump. Again, it's not about these applicants. It's about, I would like to see the city press, the OBGMA, to follow through with the original legislation. And the OBGMA boundaries start at the Y. Everything east and north of the Y is in the OBGMA. It'd be interesting to find out what the school yield would. It would be interesting to find out what they're doing. But with an unlimited and an unknown use in a drought, sooner or later, and again, not with these applicants, I have no issue with them at all, we don't know what we're doing, and we don't know what the ramifications of what we're allowing to happen. And that's the biggest problem. One or two more wells isn't really going to have a significant difference. But sooner or later, we've got to draw the line and have some real rules and real parameters and real understanding. So, we all know where we're headed. Ventura River has been buying water for eons. Miners Oaks, I don't believe they're pumping water. And when you have eight different water systems now feeding off of casitas, we've got a huge debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Hanson?
Good evening, councilmembers. So I'm Brandon Hanson. I am with Hanson Well Service, local drilling contractor. My family's been drilling wells in this valley for a hundred years. Also, one of the applicants, I'm hoping to get a permit to drill a well at our yard facility over on Bryant Street, just simply to water a small amount of irrigation over there. The two acre feet that we typically put down on an application is sort of an arbitrary number. It isn't that there is, that someone's going to go out there and use two acre feet of water. It's just sort of a standardized number that even the OBGMA actually says, do you use less than one acre feet every six months, or more than one acre feet every six months? If you use less than one acre foot every six months, it is a simple fee of like fifteen dollars or something, just to help cover their administrative costs. Just so that everyone in the room understands, in the county of Ventura, to build a home, if you're going to use a water well to build a home, they require nearly eight acre feet a year just to get a permit to build one single-family residence. If you want to build a guesthouse with that single residence, you can double that number. So asking for two acre feet to do general landscaping and that sort of thing is a very minimal amount of water in comparison to what you would have to build, just to build one single-family residence. I have a whole list of things here that got brought up. One of the things that people keep mentioning is the water meters in town. I think that the biggest problem with why people are not in compliance with water meters is because they're uneducated. They think that Big Brother's coming in to tax them on their water, or take their water rights away, or that sort of thing. So they shy away from putting in water meters or reporting water usage. And I've had this discussion with the OBGMA as well. What the public needs to be is educated. People such as yourselves, or the OBGMA, needs to let the public know that the reason why they're wanting them to meter the water is to keep the public's right to use the water. If the public can prove how much water they've been using, and how much water they need to use, and that sort of thing, the odds of Fox Canyon coming in and saying, you only have an allotment of X amount of gallons of water, without any research, is slim to none. They'll come in, they'll look at the usage and say, you've been using five acre feet a year, that's your allotment. If you go over your normal usage of water, we're going to impose some sort of a penalty, and that sort of thing. There was something that got brought up earlier about sinkholes or something around water wells, and that the water holds up the ground, or something of that nature. Subsidance was the word that was used, yeah. The ground in most places is very, very stable. The water does not hold the ground up. The ground is held up by the rocks and the sands and gravel, and all that sort of thing that's underneath the ground. And the water levels fluctuate year to year, depending on rainfall and that sort of thing. I'd be really curious what the, you know, sinkhole subsidance was about in those particular areas and cases. But it would be, in my opinion, very unusual to seize that sort of a thing. Someone mentioned sand being produced in the wells. The sand is something that happens year in and year out, depending on where the basin water level is. So as the basin lowers, water comes in from zones that aren't normally used, and a little bit of sand comes in while they sort of naturally develop.
Let's finish up.
Madam Mayor, actually, I was going to say, since Mr. Hanson is an applicant, we normally don't put time limits on applicants in public hearings.
I'm sorry, I forgot you were an applicant, too.
Okay.
But wait, before you continue, we can still impose a limit.
Reasonable limit, yes. But normally, we don't put the three-minute clock on applicants when they're submitting entitlement applications.
So, keep speaking?
Just a second, I'm thinking. I do want to put a limit on this, because we still have other things on our agenda. So I'm going to give you, I would ask that you finish up in ten minutes.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
We don't start new items after nine thirty.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty. So is that acceptable? Okay, ten minutes.
Okay. One of the things that's also been brought up is what the OBGMA is doing, or has done, or will do, for applicants to drill water wells. Jordan Kerr of Kerr Groundwater, who is the staff hydrogeologist, did his master's thesis on the basin. He is very familiar with the basin. He also was one of the people who helped write the grant information for the Spreading Grounds project, that just is, the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Spreading Grounds project is happening next week, I believe, which is a, I don't know how familiar everyone is with it, but they're, you know, up on Carin Road, at the top of Carin, there's old Spreading Grounds there, that water from San Antonio Creek, during heavy flow, gets transferred to these settling ponds, and then pumped back into the basin. So there was just a big, a huge project, several million dollars, that was spent putting in injection wells that will put water back in the basin during high-flow years of rain. So when we have, like, in this year in February, if we had had everything in place and time for the big rains that came in February, we would have put a great amount of water back into the basin that ended up going out to the ocean. So that's what that project is about. And so that, there is quite a bit of effort and money and whatnot that gets spent on the basin, and on studying the basin. What else do we have here? You know, there's been a bunch of discussion about Ojai Valley School. They're a very minor user of groundwater. I'm personally familiar with the project, and, you know, they don't get much more than what the county would require for single-family residents over there. For them to have any sort of weight on their shoulders for their use of water out of the basin would be, you know, unwarranted. They use very little water out of that well, because it doesn't make a tremendous amount of water. What else do I have here? One of the things that is interesting about the Ojai Basin for me, is that if you look at the history of the Ojai Basin, the Ojai Basin historically, say in the forties and fifties and sixties, was in a, you know, declined fairly rapidly with drought years and that sort of thing, because there was a tremendous amount of agricultural usage on the basin. When Casitas was put in, a lot of that agricultural usage transferred over Casitas, and it wasn't actually taken out of the basin. And so historically, the water levels in the basin are actually fairly high in comparison to what they have been in the last hundred years. And so the health of the basin is monitored very closely by the OBGMA, and by the staff hydrogeologists. And as an applicant, and as a drilling contractor, and as a, you know, a resident for my entire life, and many generations of my family, you know, the groundwater safety and the viability of continuing to take water out of the ground is of a great concern to me also. I'm a little shocked at the lack of knowledge that the council has about what really goes on with the water in the valley, in the basin, and the OBGMA and stuff, especially since people have such strong opinions about what should and shouldn't be done with the water wells in town. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hanson? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak regarding water wells? The water well applications. Mr. Fletcher?
I was just going to say, I would recommend, since...
Oh, well, hi there, Mr. Hanson. Come on back.
I'm also going to speak for Peter Romming, who's the other applicant. Just a brief history on what his situation is. So he actually has an existing water well that was improperly installed many years ago. And so he has poor quality water there, where there's a lot of salt in the water. So what he's actually trying to do, really, is replace his existing water well, and likely abandon the old water well, and seal it off so that there isn't so that there isn't a cross-contamination issue where there is, you know, salty water being mixed with the cleaner water in different aquifers. And it would be, it would be a poor choice to deny his permit. The sooner that we get that done, the less likely that we're going to continue to have, you know, a cross-flow issue between poor-quality water zones and high-quality water zones. So, really, all he's doing is trying to clean up a situation as opposed to add any more real usage on the basin.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher.
Madam Mayor, I was going to say, to the extent that the council's inclined to send us back for more, to get more information from the groundwater basin, I'd recommend leaving the hearing open and continuing it open. We may get further evidence submitted and the public would be entitled to comment on anything new we get. So, if that's your inclination, I'd leave the hearing open and continued if you continue the item.
Do any others persons wish to comment? I don't see any hands or bodies rising. So, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I'm inclined to continue this matter and request more information only because I think that we owe it to the applicants and we owe it to our citizens to be extremely cautious when it comes to water. And I would like to hear more information from the groundwater management. I think it's totally inappropriate for us to say we're going to deny a well because we've never approved one before, though. We have to have evidence before us to deny. Just saying we're going to deny because we've always done it before, to me, is a narrow-sighted, improper use of the authority that the people have given to us. And I haven't heard any credible evidence as to why we shouldn't issue these permits. I haven't heard any credible evidence why we shouldn't issue the permits. So, I want some more information because I think we owe it to the public from the water management. But I would be inclined to approve these permits based on the evidence that's in front of us tonight. But I would like to get some additional information simply because we are experiencing a drought. We are cutting back. And I think that the groundwater management owes us the courtesy of providing us with some live testimony here as to why they do not believe that these two wells are going to affect our aquifer. And I also think at the same time, we need to direct staff to be sure that we are monitoring the wells and that there are, if it's required by law, that there are meters on the wells. Somebody's got to be doing that. Because eventually, as you do these wells one at a time, then eventually something's going to have some impact. It just has to. The cumulative effect is critical. And until you know exactly how much water's being taken and you have some accurate records on it, I think that's doing a disservice to the public as well. So, I would be for continuing this, asking for some additional information.
I'll second that. Are you making it in the form of a motion?
I'll be glad to make it in the form of a motion and then leave it open for discussion.
Would you remember to include continuing this matter and the public hearing?
Yes, and the public hearing will remain open and continued until the next time this is brought before us on an agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on our agenda is Affordable Housing Presentation and Discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Bill Miley and Judy Murphy of the Ojai Committee on Affordable Housing has asked for this opportunity to address you. And I did issue a supplemental memorandum, which you may have received, which clarifies the nature of their request. But I think the best thing to do is to turn it over to them and let them make their presentation.
Before we turn it over to them for their presentation, would you review quickly the memo that you sent to the council clarifying their requests so that the audience at home knows?
After publication of the agenda, Bill Miley and Judy Murphy from the Ojai Committee on Affordable Housing met with me to clarify their request. They will request that the City Council consider scheduling a joint workshop with the Planning Commission covering the details of creating affordable rental housing for folks who live and work in Ojai or work here and live elsewhere. And that People Self-Help Housing Corporation will make that presentation, which will cover all the details, including the financing. They also request that following such a workshop, the City Council schedule an agenda item at a near-future council meeting to decide upon specific next steps that will move this process forward.
Thank you. Would you both like to come up? Would you like to do this one at a time? One at a time. And Judy, if you'd give us your name when you get up there?
Sure. I'm Judy Murphy, and I live on Grand Avenue, Ojai. Good evening. Late evening, Mayor.
Before you start, do we have any kind of time limit since this is a presentation?
It shouldn't be more than three minutes.
Yeah, but this, I'm asking council.
She can go for five minutes if necessary. The brevity is the...
Five.
It's short. It's shorter.
Okay. We're going to give you five anyway.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I am speaking on behalf of the Ojai Housing Committee, which seeks to create housing that people of modest means can afford. We believe that our workforce, people who work in our schools, our businesses, and for our city, should be able to afford to live in the community. I'd like to review just a few of the facts that motivate us. The state's median rent rose more than 20% from 2000 to 2012, while the median incomes fell by 8%. State and federal funding for below-market rate housing has plunged 79% over the last five years. More than half of California renters cannot reasonably afford their homes within the standard guidelines. Ojai has lost population, jobs, and school populations. Young families have been forced out by high prices of rents and home prices. So, our population has become older and many homes sit vacant and are used as vacation homes. And house prices in Ventura County are again riding an escalator. The costs are increasing faster than workers pay, meaning there's been no improvement in the problem of home affordability. Our committee recognizes the strong need for reasonably-priced housing. We would like to see both homes for purchase and rental housing for people with moderate means in Ojai. Today, we are addressing the rental units as we think we can make a larger impact there. We would prefer to have the units all be 100% affordably-priced for low and moderate income levels, have onsite management, and be destined for people who already live or work here. This would reduce the amount of commuting to and from Ojai, which would help the environment, and it would provide our local businesses and schools with increased activity. We understand that this will require the developer to do community outreach to ensure that it's local people that are signed up prior to the development completion. We are following up on an invitation that was made by John Merck last year to People Self-Help Housing Corporation to provide an educational workshop on the development process and funding of affordable housing. We are asking tonight that the City Council authorize a joint workshop with the Planning Commission in the very near future so that our political representatives, the staff, and the public will better understand how Ojai could offer reasonably-priced housing to the people who live and work in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'll let Bill talk, and then if you have any questions for us, okay?
Okay, thank you. Five minutes.
Thank you. Bill Miley. Just a couple of things to add to the statement of the problem. In two recent articles in the Los Angeles Times, one of which was an editorial, they spoke about the median household income in LA and Orange Counties being $59,400. And of those people, the median cost for rental apartments required 47.9% of their income, which is way over the 30% that's considered normal. Where we can pretty much guess that that's going on in Ojai also. The letter from People Self-Help, which you have in your packet, speaks about how, over the last 40 years, 44 years, they've developed 1,500 affordable rental units and 1,100 affordable single-family homes for purchase. They cover all three counties, Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties. And we've had representatives from them speak to your council a number of times. John Fowler, who's the president of the Duncan Group. Ken Triguero and Morgan Benavido has spoken to Kathleen Wald and maybe, I think, our city manager. We think that a workshop with the City Council, with the Planning Commission, would be a very appropriate way to start the process of getting to the building of affordable rental units, which we're advocating. We've been doing, our Affordable Housing Committee has been, over the past couple of years, building a case for construction of new affordable dwelling units, and we've now focused on rentals. So, we would like your council to support the idea of a joint public workshop with the Planning Commission and schedule that soon and then follow up with an agenda item so we can take the next steps. We would like to see affordable units developed within a couple of years.
Thank you. And I do have some speaker cards. And I want to make a comment now because I want us to keep it in mind as we're brainstorming, as we're looking at the concept of affordable housing. And that is, I want us to keep in mind that if we are using federal funds, we cannot restrict the residency to Ojai residents only.
That's not true. Madam Mayor, I have direct information on that?
All right. Come back up, Mr. Miley.
Bill Miley. We have spoken to both the executive director of the Ventura County Housing Authority, Doug Tapkin. Judy Murphy and I, as co-chair of this committee, spent a two-hour telephone conversation with him a number of months ago. He talked about a point system that nonprofit affordable housing developers can set up. And the points are accumulated by, if you work in the area, work in the city, if you live in the city, if you pay more rent, if you live someplace else and work here, it all adds up to points. And you get more points if you live and work here and you're paying more than you do if you live someplace else and work here. And you get more points than people who live someplace else and don't work here and want to come here. And we also got the same information from the People Self-Help, Morgan Benavido and Ken Triguero, that they use a point system and it's accepted even though they're using federal money. And they said it works. So, that's what we know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. That puts me in a more peaceful frame of mind. Mr. Fletcher?
Madam Mayor, if I could, I don't disagree with that. Now, you would have to carefully review the point system and it can't be done in a fashion, obviously, that is so weighted as to make it impossible for a non-resident to ever get to the top of the list. And we'd have to be sensitive to housing advocates challenging that. But I don't disagree with Mr. Miley that we can, and we're talking about now private nonprofits doing like tax credit-type projects, different from Section 8. Section 8 lists are different than privately-developed affordable projects.
And one of the reasons I put that out there up front is because I want us to start talking about it right now. Because I don't want us to go six months down the road thinking we're going to have a project that is going to benefit only Ojai and then have the question of federal funds come up. So, that's why I tossed that out there. It works very well for me. Any questions from staff before I go to the general public?
Great idea to have a workshop. I mean, I think all the numbers of housing needs have all been identified in the housing element. There's no doubt that we need affordable rental housing here. I mean, I am very disappointed that we have not built anything in years and years and years. I think the last thing built was Montgomery, no?
Sycamore Homes.
Sycamore Homes. And that was literally, I was not even on the council yet. It was dedicated right as I was coming on to council. And I'll be on council now 11 and a half years, and nothing has been built. Partially, we've lost redevelopment money, so that was a big loss. So, I'm in favor of anything we could do to work out. We have met with People Self-Help. Rob and Mr. Malane and I spent a whole afternoon with them. And the points and the financing, it all comes, there's two issues. Where do we get the money? And what about zoning? And those seem to be the two issues. I'd be more than happy to have a workshop with the Planning Commission and see where, if we can basically surmount those obstacles.
Madam Mayor, just as a brief comment, I couldn't agree with Councilwoman Smith's comments anymore. This is a critical situation for our community. It's so difficult to find affordable housing and particularly affordable rental units. And we've tried to address it with the second dwelling unit aspect of the housing element. We have the Building Appeals Board that was looking into that specifically. But I think anything we can do to further move this along, it's past due as far as I'm concerned. And I think a joint workshop would be fabulous.
And I would like to mention that we received, and there may be more, but we have received emails in support of the Affordable Housing Joint Workshop, the type of discussion we're having, from William Wirick, Helen Connolly, Vicki Peters. And like I said, I'm sure there are more. Well, I know there are because I've received emails from Mr. Miley and Judy Murphy also. And I have three, two speaker cards. Bill Wirick?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I think the exchange that just occurred relative to the point system is why I think it's an excellent idea to have a workshop because it's time to have a real frank discussion. It's time to really get people's concerns that are out there, maybe unspoken, get them expressed, get the answers, find out what's possible, what's not possible. And I think this workshop is... And I think this workshop is an excellent way to get around the issue of people being concerned that affordable housing projects would, you know, be not compatible with the character of Ojai. And we need to explore the ways that it is possible to do that. And the workshop is the best way to get that information out and hopefully provoke a really good discussion. So I wanted to make that point, why I think it's an excellent idea, and the sooner the better. Second point. As Chair of the Building Appeals Board, putting that hat on, I just had a discussion a little bit earlier with Kathleen about Ms. Wald, about that we do have a joint draft, joint recommendation that the planning commission and the Building Appeals Board have developed. We are hoping to call a Building Appeals Board meeting for September, hoping to get it agendized on the planning commission meeting in September, and get a recommendation to you on reforming the second unit non-conforming compliance program sooner rather than later. We haven't just been waiting on this, we've been working on this. We've got a document ready to go. Needs to go to the two different groups and then come to council for consideration on those recommendations. So that is in process, hopefully sooner rather than later. Kathleen knows I've been kind of pushing her on this, and she's got a very full plate, and I understand that. The last thing I want to say is that, in terms of the options, I would caution against the options which seem to imply, as listed, that it's an either-or situation. For example, form an ad hoc committee or focus on implementation of the second unit compliance program first. Our focus on development for policies for inclusionary housing and density bonus programs first. I really think we need to be looking at simultaneous efforts here. And I don't think we should be sitting in a position of saying, "Well, we're going to do this first, and then we'll consider something else there. And then after that, then we'll, you know, talk about the 11 years." That'll just stretch out even more. We need to be looking at these efforts simultaneously. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg Goodwin?
I actually just, I was wondering what the status is of the employee housing that the Ojai Valley was supposed to provide when they remodeled four or five years ago. Did that ever get built?
They're buying an existing apartment building.
They are, okay. And then, and I just think also when we do this workshop, you know, we really need to consider more of that sort of combined, you know, like the McCarty property that had the proposed healthcare facility with some onsite apartments and housing. You know, I think we need to look into encouraging more of that. And how much, does it all have to be within the city limits of Ojai? Or can it be in the unincorporated parts of, like, Oakview, the housing? Or is it all?
First, it has to be within our four and a half square miles.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Pete LaFollette, and then I'll go to you, Dale.
Thanks, Mayor, I did put one in. As far as the "show me the money" thread of this conversation, if you take a look at the 2013 housing element update that the city put together on their web, and they need to be congratulated, it's very thorough on identifying state and federal funds. The Community Development Block Grant Program. Housing Urban Development, which is federal home investment partnership program. If you take a look at Table 11-2, just very thorough and numerous, state and federal. So for citizens or the one council member that, under the mistaken impression that Ojai would somehow bear the brunt of this, that's not the case at all. But if you just take a look at the state housing program summary that the city has on its website, gives you a lot of good, useful information.
Thank you, Pete. Dale Hansen?
Yes, thank you, Dale Hansen, I live in the city. As you know, I'm a real estate agent, and I have people coming in my office every day wanting rentals. And they can't afford the rentals that are available. It's really a critical issue, and it's painful, in fact, to, you know, give them a list that I know they're not going to find what they want. They can't afford what's on that list. Rents are high, and if you have a dog, you're really out of the picture. Because they just don't take animals. They'll take cats, maybe. But I mean, for people who are wanting low-income rentals, it's very hard to find, especially if it's a family and they need, you know, a couple of three-bedrooms. It's very hard. And I really hope we do the joint workshop with the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to council.
I'm ready to make a motion about having a joint workshop unless other council members want to speak.
I would like to make one comment. We're talking about a joint meeting. I would like for us to include the council, planning commission, and the Building Appeals Board.
That's fine.
Why the Building Appeals Board?
I'm ready for a motion. Go ahead.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we have a joint workshop on how to get affordable rental housing built in Ojai, and including the city council, the planning commission, and the Building Appeals Board. And that it happens sometime in October. Is that reasonable?
We'll do our best.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that, and then I just want to make one comment before we vote. I want to personally thank Judy Murphy and Bill Miley. I don't know what happened to Bill. But the two of you have spent hours, hundreds, if not thousands of hours. And I'll tell you, it hasn't gone unnoticed, at least from my standpoint. And thank you so much. You know, it's really through the efforts of people like you and Bill that the city is as an exceptional place to live, as it truly is. Because we can't do it all. We don't have the time. But I'll tell you, I was just saying thank you, Bill, to you and Judy. What a tremendous job you've done in this and getting it this far. I really appreciate it.
And I would like to echo those comments and add that I spent a bit of time talking with Judy and Bill and sent them on various errands of search and research. And I was, I am just delighted to see, because I can tell, that they followed all of those suggestions. That was a lot of work. Councilmember Lori?
I would just, again, echo those comments. And my other question, just being with this joint meeting, is will we have People Self Help Housing do a presentation? Because their letter to Ms. Wald was very detailed and has really good information. I would love to learn more about, particularly how to fund this.
My understanding is that is the request. The request is that we have this opportunity for People Self Help to educate us.
And I have one more request. I'm going to miss a council meeting, the first meeting in October. So I would request that we put this on the second meeting in October, if we're able to do it in October.
So wouldn't it be better to do something like we did with the skateboard park and just have a special meeting that's dedicated to this one topic?
In fact, I'm not sure we can cover everything. You know, a meeting that goes over four or five hours becomes counterproductive. So it may be that we have workshops part A and part B. You know, just to hear all the financial information from People Self Help and et cetera, it may be actually necessary to have two sessions where we get all the information and then we sort it out and see what's possible for Ojai. So I would be open to us leaving that as an opportunity to have two different nights. And it should not be the same night as a meeting.
And I would just request that scheduling it in October, and I think that's what we need to do, is just like we did with the skateboard park, make sure that Mayor Strobel's here. We really would like everybody here.
So is our motion okay? Does it need to be amended anyway? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. The next item on our agenda is lighting code enforcement update.
Thank you. This is going to be somewhat of a team presentation. Gail Topping has been helping with the implementation of the lighting ordinance. Kathleen Wald has been helping, and Deborah Pendry have. So we've all been working together on this. I'll try and go through the presentation fairly quickly. The lighting ordinance that was adopted a year ago has two parts. One part is regulation of new lighting that's installed either on new buildings or on remodeled buildings. And the second part has to do with operating requirements for existing lighting that's been approved in the past. As far as new construction goes, we have put a bit of effort, especially on Kathleen's part, in making sure that we don't let lights slip through the cracks and that when houses are approved and built, yeah. So to make sure that they happen. And we've outlined in your staff report the things that we've done along those lines. The greater challenge has been dealing with existing lights. And we've kind of broken that down into residential, commercial, and streetlights. I should say that the requirement to have lighting that's shielded and downward-directed actually dates back to 2004. So, an ordinance was adopted in 2004, and presumably, buildings that were built since that time should have lighting that's downward-directed and shielded. The lighting ordinance that we adopted a year ago is more strict and has greater requirements. And it also has operating requirements for lighting that goes back beyond 2004. As far as commercial lighting goes, the most difficult part was trying to figure out how to come up with a regulation that worked for commercial businesses that would describe in a simple, usable way how to, what the lighting requirements were. And basically, the requirement for them is that if their lighting doesn't comply, it needs to be turned off after business hours unless it's needed for safety or security. And so you'll recall, we spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out what we would accept as lighting that met the safety and security requirements. And eventually, you adopted a resolution along those lines. As a follow-on to that, we have done what you did today, which is to find businesses that have done a good job complying with that and recognize them. With residential lighting, the requirement is that non-compliant lighting be turned off at 10 o'clock. And we have tried very hard to get the word out to the community through advertising and through sending letters and a variety of other means. And it really isn't working at all. So our latest effort, our feeling is, it's difficult for people. First of all, it's difficult to get a message across. Gail has told me that you have to repeat a message 29 times before it's even heard. And I think we've done it a lot of times, but maybe not 29. So I think part of the problem is getting the message across, but part of the problem is it's just difficult to remember, "Oh, I've got to turn off my porch light every evening at 10 o'clock." So at our last meeting, we entered into a contract with the Green Coalition to help us get people to change out their porch lights. And I do have a little show and tell here. This is, this is a light bulb that, through the Green Coalition, we'll be offering to up to 80 people for free. And the shield is actually built in. And it's a 15-watt bulb, but it's got mirrors on the inside that reflect the light. And so, you know, you put it so that the shield is facing the outside. The light comes out, lights up your porch to a safe level. And it's pretty much a no-brainer to install.
This faces towards the wall or away?
The light shines towards the wall. So we also have another product, which is a shield that fits over a light bulb. So if you don't want to put a new light bulb in or that won't fit, this is another option. And we'll be looking for other types of devices because it's very clear that there's all sorts of different types of lights out there, and they all need another approach. So Gail can share with you a little bit about some of that. And then another topic that she will also get into is the streetlights and what's possible with the street lighting.
So I might as well start with the street lighting because it's, you know, a word is, a picture's better than words. On the before side, it is the street light that was put up in 1960, 1970s. You can see how glaring it is, it's time-lapse. This is on Andrew and Daly. And the city has installed a shielded light, same time, time-lapse. And you can see, they're both efficiently doing the job, but one is not glared. So I'll let you look at this.
Madam Mayor, with regard to that specific street light, I've had contact with two people that lived at that intersection that called me to say how wonderful it was that that shield was put on, that the light, that street light shined into their bedrooms at night, and there wasn't anything they could do to darken the room enough. And then now that the shield has gone up, they don't even know that there's a light out there.
Great.
Yeah, it's fabulous.
I want to encourage other intersections to adopt a light and possibly as a neighborhood afford to do it. The city bought this one or converted it, and I think every neighborhood can do the same.
While we're passing that around, I know that some of these products are going to be offered at no cost.
That's right.
And, but I'd still like us to begin creating a list of where they can be purchased, where a vendor?
I can address some of that right now. This is a, sorry, this is a wall mount. This is really common. This is the glass that was in it right out of the store. And so I converted it by arcade glass into frosted glass. It costs $40. I call this a conversion. Everybody has this fixture on their lights, but they're really too bright with the glass and a high-intensity bulb. So that's one conversion. It's very inexpensive. The other one is a dark skies lantern. It's a wall mount also, but it's very shielded, low intensity. It does the work of the light and not the glare and not the trespass.
They're on sale at?
Absolutely. And this is really popular. It's lightweight, it's easy to install. It's also the same as the conversion one, about $40. So we're talking pretty inexpensive. And then the other one is that a lot of people do floodlights on the corners of their houses and corners of their commercial establishments. And this is a thin tin cover for the floodlight. And the floodlight is one of these very rounded floodlights. It's usually two, and this could go over them. And this is $20. So we're not talking about a lot of money. And Ace Hardware and True Value. And some of the novelty stores are carrying lights. This is a porch light. It fits this way. It's battery-operated. It's timer-censored. It's wireless. It's motion-activated. It's waterproof. And it's instant install. And it's very effective. And it's only $14. So, you know, this doesn't even have to have electricity for people to have security and safety. So it's available in the valley, all of these conversions.
Good. So the original adoption, the city council set aside a year to work on voluntary compliance. And obviously, we need more time to do that. So at this point, this is really just a status report. And the group plans to continue meeting monthly and working on this effort and trying to make more progress as far as compliance with the ordinance.
We also have the Green Coalition.
Green Coalition is working on it too, so there'll be more manpower. Because we've given them some funds, right? So they'll have a little bit more funding to work with. So hopefully, Gail, they'll be working with you in getting out the word, even if it involves knocking on doors and showing them, showing people what's available. That's great.
And I have a question. We have a list of, all right, we'll call them offenders. We have a list of offenders. Are we reaching out to those people first?
Yes, we're developing, we are going to work with, especially on the commercial side, with people who have excessively bright lights and try and encourage them to comply. them to comply.
If they, if a business exists in a neighborhood, do they have a CUP allowing them to be a commercial business?
Well, generally, businesses are in commercial zones. There's probably one or two exceptions, and the only exception I can think of is governed by a CUP.
Okay, and I have another in mind, but I'm not going to put it out over the microphone. Okay. Is that it on our staff report?
That is it, yes.
I don't have speaker cards on this. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Nick?
I just wanted.
Good to see you so often tonight. We haven't seen you for a while.
I was out of town last month. I also wanted to say that you can buy spray glazing for glass at Ojai Creates. So, you can take the glass panels out of your fixture and spray them with this frosted glass thing, so it'll just frost it. And it's permanent. I mean, you can wash it off, but it's not going to wash off, yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor Strobel. Last September, October, somewhere in there, we had some permitted rewiring of our house on Eucalyptus Street and installed some of these sensor-driven lights on the corners of the house. They are shielded, they work very well, they give us all the light that we need to navigate the yard when you get close to the light, and I like it very much. In fact, my granddaughter gave me a Christmas ornament, dark blue with little silver speckles on it, because she remembers what the night sky in Ojai looks like. It's dark here, and she really likes it. But I seem to recall reading the ordinance that was passed a year ago, and it, I thought I saw that it grandfathered anything that was in place as of last August. Is that, did I, did I miss that somewhere? And if so, aren't we just enforcing the rules on people that have done something in the last year? Thank you.
Would you like to address that, Mr. Clark?
Sure, I'd be, I'd be glad to do that. So, generally speaking, the ordinance addresses new lighting that's newly installed, but there are operating requirements in the ordinance for existing lights. And, and the operating requirements, generally speaking, are for residential, that lights that don't comply should be turned off at 10 o'clock, and for commercial, that lights be turned off after business hours unless needed for safety or security.
It's not required to change the lights.
Come up to the podium so the folks at home can hear you.
I apologize, but it's, but it's, it's not required that the lights be replaced with something different.
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this issue? I'll bring you back to council. And I think this was just a report.
Madam Mayor, I, I think that it's a good idea to keep on the education. It's, shielding lights does make a difference. And if people haven't gotten the website and viewed the video of the dark sky and the difference it makes, it's, it's a huge difference. And I think that educating the public is the way to go, and I think it would be a great opportunity for us to knock on people's door and tell them about it, and especially the ones that don't turn off their lights at 10. I, I've always had an issue enforcing the oper, the operation part of our, of our ordinance just because I feel like we're forcing people to do, to retrofit. But at, at, at the same time, I understand why it's on there, and I would prefer to keep doing education on it.
And I'd like to comment, it's been a week or so ago, maybe 10 days, long time for me, but we met with representatives of Southern California Edison, Nancy Williams, and three P's, Paula, whatever, and at any rate, another, another young lady who's going to be working with us here in the city. And we talked about the streetlights, and they are very open. They know how very important it is to the city, and so, we are going to be working with Edison. We even discussed the possibility of they adopt a lamp, adopt a street lamp, and that the neighbors could contribute to purchase the updated lighting. So, I just wanted to mention that. Any other comments? Okay. Next item on our agenda, status report on tree maintenance issues. Did I skip something somewhere? Okay. Status report on tree maintenance issues, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This also is just an update. At the May 27 meeting, we actually had an urgency item regarding tree trimming, in particular, the tree trimming being done by the, by Caltrans and by SCE. But Councilmember Clapp suggested that, that I look and see what other cities are doing in terms of regulation of trees and tree trimming and so forth. So, we've done a small amount of research, not a lot of research, and are bringing it to you as a discussion. So, first of all, with respect to Caltrans, as you know, Caltrans came in and did some pretty gruesome cutting along Highway 33, and we eventually got them to, to put a stop to it, and they voluntarily offered to consult with us before they re-initiate any further tree trimming. As of now, since that time, they have not contacted us, and they have not done any tree trimming. So, we have not kicked the sleeping dog either. For the Edison Company, there's a requirement that they get an annual permit, and so they're, before they are, before they go out and do their annual maintenance, they need to submit certain things to the city which they had not submitted. So, we asked them to stop as well, and they did. We authorized a few emergency situations, but as of now, they have not submitted but are going to submit any day their list for the annual permit. And really, that list is, it's, I've, I've got a general idea of what it looks like. It's extremely lengthy. It lists every tree that might need to be cut, not just every tree that needs to be cut. And they do have standards for utility cutting. They are, the list is managed by an arborist, and so they submit it, and we were able to monitor it to the extent that we have staff and resources to monitor it, but we really don't. So, that's where that stands. As far as individual trees go, we do require permits for trimming of certain types of trees when the cuts are more than four inches in diameter, and we had 10 permits in the last 12 months. Those all require an arborist's report, but we generally accept what the arborist says and issue the permit, and there's no follow-up to verify that what they've done is, is in conformance with what the permit said, unless there's a complaint, but after they've cut the tree, I'm not sure what good a complaint does. So, we had heard that both Thousand Oaks and Palo Alto have fairly rigorous requirements, and we did take a look at their requirements. Thousand Oaks really just relates to oak trees. Palo Alto has a broader range of trees. They both require permits for removing and relocating and so forth, but only Thousand Oaks requires them for pruning. Thousand Oaks does have a fairly extensive review process where they have, actually, both cities have city arborists, and so, whereas in our case, we're receiving a per, a permit and administratively approving it, the other two cities actually have an arborist look at it and make a determination, just like you'd have a professional planner look at a, a planning job. In the case of Thousand Oaks, they also have a number of follow-up steps, including potential onsite observation or after-the-fact verification, where they have to actually leave the trimmings in place until the inspector's been out there to see what's going on. Now, all of these do add costs, and we would assume that the costs, if these other steps are approved, would be borne by the owners of the trees. And so, we've provided some estimates for you as to what our current tree permit costs are, what the proposed tree permit, full 100% cost recovery rates would be, and what it would be if we had an arborist review the applications. And so, this is really just presented for public and council input and discussion.
Madam Mayor, could I ask Mr. Clark a question, please? Taking a look at the, the Caltrans situation or Southern California Edison, and I presume it might even be, I don't know what else is on those lines, it could be cable company, I don't know who's responsible for actually making sure the trees are trimmed. But with those companies, why couldn't we analyze that, that application the same way we would a building application and, and pass on the cost? Have an arborist look at it, subcontract somebody to go out and confirm the way it's being done, and just say that if you're going to trim these trees, this is what, what it's going to be?
So, Mr. Fletcher may be able to help me a little bit, bit on this, but I think that the, there's a distinction between where we stand with Caltrans and where we stand with the utilities. I, I think Caltrans has a right to trim their trees, the trees that are on their property. What, what we, one of the suggestions we made to Caltrans, and I don't know if, if they would agree to this or not, was that we do have a, a maintenance allocation from Caltrans that's used for maintaining the medians and so forth. So, you know, they've allocated money, and we can charge charges against it, but we don't use that full allocation every year. So, one of the things that we asked them is could we hire someone to do the tree trimming and get reimbursed through that allocation? And they never really did answer that question. And, and I don't know, can we require, impose requirements on them beyond?
I don't think so. I think we all agree that, that the utilities, those private companies are bound by our, our tree ordinance. The state's going to be superior to us. I think the way you'd handle it is through some sort of contractual arrangement with our, with our street maintenance issues. And I don't know if there's a, a political remedy going through our representatives or something, dealing with the state, you know, state staff and trying to get some, some different cooperative agreements put in place. That would be the other way to go.
But the state would be different than Edison.
Right.
Edison, Edison, yeah, we could amend our ordinance and, and require them as part of their, the permit process to reimburse our cost of a, at least a review arborist, A, that their, their, their submittals have to be prepared by an arborist, which I guess they are, but then we could also have them reviewed by an arborist and, and overseen, and that could be a, a permit condition.
I, so I, I thought a little bit about this, and again, they, they have a standard which is pretty much a, an accepted standard in the industry for utility trimming. I'm not sure how much we can do with that. And then, they just have a list of, it's, it's an extremely lengthy list of every tree that could potentially be cut. And so, I'm thinking that maybe one potential idea is, instead of trying to review that list, which I'm not sure what you would do to review it, is that we, that if we hire an arborist, that we have the arborist go out and spot-check what they're doing. So, they, so they need to, you know, they need to tell us where they're going to be and when they're going to be there, and then we could send an arborist out in the field, not for every single cut, but on an unannounced random basis, to make sure that they're actually following the standard that they have imposed on them.
Okay, now, you're talking right now about like Edison and this.
That's Edison, yeah.
The list that you're talking about is not Caltrans list.
That's right. It's just, it's just Edison.
Okay, and I have a quick comment about Caltrans. I'd like us to put that question about reimbursement on some kind of rotating reminder. I would like to keep asking them and asking them that question until one way to quiet us down is to say yes.
Okay.
Do you mean reimbursement, or do you mean us being allowed to do the pruning within the city limits?
That's exactly what I mean. But we would have to have a Caltrans permission.
Right, I think, I think we need to pursue that for sure, yeah. Like, keep going back to them, because they won't come back to us.
Of course not.
Yeah.
So, so I think when we get done with this discussion, that would be a good motion to make, so that I can say that the council voted to request this, and then I'll, you know, I'll write the letter and we'll keep pursuing it.
Madam Mayor, I have, I have a question. This, this chart here at the bottom, Thousand Oaks Follow-Up, is, is the one where we have definitely our largest gap. And this is, this is, includes utility maintenance program, so this is utility and private?
It wasn't, I'm not 100% sure whether it includes utilities.
Well, it says utility maintenance program.
Yeah, they do have.
Annual Notification Arborist Report. I guess what I'm asking is, did you ask Thousand Oaks if the follow-up was part of the requirement of the utilities?
No, I just reviewed their manuals, so I haven't had a conversation with them.
Okay, so maybe that might be helpful too, to see what kind of controls they've developed with, with their utility companies, and maybe even Caltrans. The other thing is, one of the major problems that, it's not just pruning over four inches in the town where we have the biggest problem, or one of the problems, particularly with oak trees, it's also over-pruning of oak trees, which is not included in our ordinance. And over-pruning is, is people's attempt to display the, the shape of the branches of an oak tree, but not realizing that when they do that, they're condemning the oak to, you know, ultimate death because you are exposing the limbs to the sun and, and then ultimately, it burns the tree and the, and the tree dies. So, we do have the over-four-inch element within our pruning, but I would like to see an amendment to our, a tree maintenance guidelines to also include guidelines on over-pruning or to the prevention of over-pruning of oak trees.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and I absolutely agree with Councilmember Clapp that we should, and I think, but I, I think we need to review what it means to be ISA certified, because I, I'm pretty sure they have so many guidelines and requirements to be certified, and that would probably be including over-pruning and not pruning enough. And so, I, I think that would be included in that certification, so, but I, I do agree we should follow up on that to make sure it.
Yeah, I think we should, because, because there, there's firewood that comes out of that over-pruning, and firewood's very expensive. So, there's a, there's a, a kind of the fox guiding, guarding the henhouse here when it comes to pruning oak trees, because there's a double, double income stream. You have the pruning income, and then you have the, the pruning of the oak tree firewood that's left over, that you get a lot of big bucks for. So, I think if we had some guidelines within our, within our own ordinance that, that do not allow this sort of over-pruning, that we would see fewer trees dying, particularly in this drought. The ones that you're seeing really dying right now are the ones that have been over-pruned, because they have no defense mechanism against the drought. So, I don't know how we would proceed in getting that added into the code, but I think it would be a good idea to do it sooner than later, if the rest of the council agrees.
So, I guess the, so, so the question is, the only way I can think of to monitor that is to require a permit. So, so right now, the, the permit is required when you have cuts that are four inches in diameter. You know, where do you draw the line as far as when you require a permit? It was interesting to me that Palo Alto does not require a permit at all for pruning, but they do have extensive guidelines which are advisory. So, that would get at people who want to do the right thing, but wouldn't necessarily get at people who don't want to do the right thing.
I think with, I think with the larger trees, the, the individuals not going to be pruning that tree, the professionals can be pruning that tree. And I think for us to have a, a requirement that they adhere to ISA standards for oak pruning would be the thing to do, not leave it to the, the goodwill necessarily of the individual tree, tree pruner, because, like I said, it's the fox guarding the henhouse. Because the left. 'Cause the leftover wood is sold as firewood and there's a lot of money in that. How, how much you get a, for a quart of firewood now? Four, five, four hundred bucks?
I, I'm not sure, but it is.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
And, and when you print a big oak tree, you get a lot of cords of wood out of that, so you're, you're, you could get thousand, fifteen hundred, two grand off of an oak tree pruning for, for cords of firewood. So, there's no incentive to, um, be cons- to be conservative in the pruning when there's that kind of financial gain in over pruning. So, I really feel that it needs to be, um, a requirement to have a, um, have a permit to prune an oak tree and maybe it's over a certain size. I don't know. Do you have any idea, Mr. Lara, whether a certain size might be a good idea, at which point you require a tree, uh, a pruning permit for a, an oak tree? Or a sycamore as well?
Yeah, I think that it would be good for us to adopt the oak tree maintenance program and we don't have that and that would probably solve a lot of our, our concerns because we do have a lot of oaks.
And do you think maybe sycamore too? 'Cause those are the two indigenous trees in the valley, maybe a sycamore and oak tree.
I would, I would.
Yeah.
Agree, yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to interrupt here because, um,
We're at ten thirty.
We're at ten thirty and I'd like to ask the council's pleasure, the remaining items on the agenda is the successor agency, consent calendar and the ropes. Shall we continue and complete the agenda?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd suggest we continue because we have a meeting, the first part of September of the Oversight Board.
Yes.
At which time, I believe we have to deal with the ROPS, so it's really important that we've complete that agenda item tonight.
Okay. Then I'm going to, we're going to recess as the Ojai City Council convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. And on the agenda is consent items, A, the warrants, and then we have one discussion item. Do I hear a motion for the consent calendar?
Some of.
Second.
Roll call. Lapp?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
And the discussion item is, uh, Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule, ROPS four fourteen dash fifteen B.
Thank you. So, um, in accordance with the budget approved by the council and the state law, we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year administrative allowance and we're claiming half of that on this ROPS. And the loan payment will be in the other cycle, so it's not on this ROPS.
Any comments, questions from the agency? Motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the ROPS fourteen dash fifteen B for the period January one, two thousand fifteen through June thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Roll call. Lapp?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry for interrupting, but I feel that we did not really complete, um, I just said I know, seven, I know we need to move on 'cause it was ten thirty, but I'm a little unclear whether the staff received any sort of direction from council about the tree management question that Severo, Lara and I brought up.
Okay.
So, I'm kind of confused. Does?
Well, I think, I think there's a couple of things. One is that it would probably be a good idea for the City Council to approve a motion regarding the Caltrans trees. The second thing is, um, I think you asked us to bring back, um, an amendment to the ordinance that requires, um, greater monitoring for the, uh, SCE and utility trimming. And then the third thing was guidelines for the, um, private trees, if they're oaks and sycamores, over some certain size.
Guidelines and permitting requirement, not just guidelines.
Okay.
Not just guidelines, permitting requirements.
Yeah, I, I was just, uh, unclear if we had decided what approach we'd take.
Right.
With the SEC requirements or, or permit.
Yeah.
Whether we were gonna have follow-up or whether, it, it, it just seemed unclear which direction.
So, so I think to, to add the, um, review step to the, to the SCE permit, you'd have to actually make a code change.
Okay.
And I think for the, um, Caltrans, it's just a matter of approving a motion so that I have a basis on which to write a letter. And probably the, probably the, um, pruning also requires a code change.
So, I would like to, okay. I'd like to motion to, um, direct Mr. Clark to contact Caltrans in order to initiate a, an agreement for the city of Ojai pruning the trees within the city limits on Caltrans property. Does that work?
Fine, yeah.
Okay.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and then I'd like to make a motion to, amid the ordinance, uh, the tree ordinance, to require a pruning permit for oak trees and sycamore trees, including, uh, guidelines on over pruning and, uh, IS- within ISA standards?
Uh, yeah, I think an ISA certification would cover all of that, would cover over pruning, the proper way of, of trimming a tree. Yeah, an oak tree or sycamore, et cetera, just in general.
Okay.
All trees.
Okay. So, I guess that's the motion. Does that work for you, Rhonda? Okay.
All here, second?
I'll second it.
And the motion is to direct staff to bring back an ordinance.
Amendment to the ordinance.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then I have a third motion to direct staff to make an amendment to the tree pruning maintenance guidelines for utilities?
That's not exactly it, but I, I think, I think if you just say that to amend the ordinance to require that, um, utilities pay for monitoring of their cutting.
Okay. That sounds good.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I did rush us on, didn't I? I was, I was so focused on, on getting that finished.
Well, that's why I helped us blow through the other stuff to get back to that, 'cause
And Mr. Clark, is the, the closed session item just a duplicate? Didn't we do this at the?
Done it, yeah.
All right. So, do we have reports from council members?
Madam Mayor, I just, uh, wanna wish our school district the best and our students for starting school today. Very exciting and as a, as a parent of two students, one started kindergarten, kindergarten, the other one, uh, entering third grade, so wish them all the best.
Mayor, pretend, Smith, any comments?
Nothing.
Nope.
Nothing.
Okay, um, reports from city manager?
I just wanted to mention that, uh, Councilmember Lara and I will be representing the city at the League of California Cities next week. In Los Angeles.
Mr. Fletcher?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Grant?
Real quick, I know it's late, and I just wanted to mention that, uh, last week, I guess, uh, after your skateboard meeting, uh, we, the staff met with Shane Allen, who was doing some volunteer work out at the park unbeknownst completely to the staff ourselves and we reviewed what was going on there and it was very helpful, the things he was doing. Generally, there's just some very minor cracks or saw cuts through all that concrete that have very minor spalls and he's been putting some caulk in there. There's some tiles that have been coming out too as well. So, uh, we agreed he's gonna list as a city volunteer, so we've got proper liability coverage and so on and we'll be providing the, any kind of caulk that he needs from now on. And then today, we also met with Skate, California Skate Parks, are the ones who built the skate park in the first place. We met with them and a few people from, uh, Ojai Skate and Wendy Hilgers and a few people. And, uh, we went through the same thing in Ojai Skate, I'm sorry, California Skate Parks came and the guy Sergio, who was the foreman when they originally built the skate park, was there. And he thought, I mean, we're really at forty years right now, this October, the skate park's been open. And he thought it was in outstanding condition. He thought it was in very excellent condition, that everything's holding up very well as far as all the surfacing and everything else. And, uh, there is one thing they're doing different now and they build parks and that is all these saw cuts they put in for expansion cracks. They, they normally caulk those in with a special dense caulk for, for areas that get rain so it doesn't expand and crack them out. And now they're starting to do that even in our ears because those little cracks get little rocks or they get, they tend to break out when skateboards or other things hit them, you know, uh, and so, they're, what we're looking at is to clean all those cracks out, we're gonna pressure wash them out, maybe cut some new, cut them clean and they're gonna put this special caulk material in there, so working with, uh, California Skate Parks to do that. And there's two little divots that were broken out too that they're gonna replace as well, put some special material. So, it's good, good, uh, meeting we had anyways, they kinda gave us direction on exactly what materials they use and we'll be buying those materials and work when Shane is a volunteer and her own staff to make sure the repairs are kept up. But basically, it looked like it was in great shape, yeah.
Madam Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
Um, that's curious because at the skateboard workshop, um, we were told that the razors, scooters and the bicycles are causing a lot of damage to the surface. And, um, did you ask California Skate Park about the fact that we have users who are not on skateboards and what, 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 what is the damage from that?
Absolutely, and, and it is true that, uh, they were pointing out, I guess in Huntington Park, there was a, a big skate park run by Vans, the, uh, the shoe company, skate, skate shoe company. And, uh, they were saying that one day a week, they let skate, uh, they let bikes and scooters in there and that day is just all the damage that happens to the parks in those days. And a lot of the damage they saw in the park, the, the nicks and the, so on, those are being caused by bikes. There's definitely, they just say the mass of the bike, when it goes up and lands, it causes more damage. So, it's, it's definite that, uh, the bikes and even the scooters were causing more damage absolutely than the lighter weight, the less mass of the skateboards.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll comment that I've received a lot of positive comments about the joint workshop last week, uh, regarding the skate park. Our finance director have any comments? Madam Clerk?
Um, just to say that October sixth is when the vote by mail ballots will be, will start to be mailed out and then the last day to register to vote for the November fourth elections, October twentieth. And I'll keep repeating that so people can come in and register with me. I have forms or there's forms online.
And I'd just like to confirm, a ballot will be, they'll begin to mail the balance, uh, ballots, October sixth?
Yes.
Any further comments, questions? Meeting adjourned.